Okay. Good afternoon. Welcome to the August 8, 2013 meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. I can welcome you to our meeting. Would commend to you to read your, our meeting policies, which are found on the backside of page one of the agenda. If you'd like to address us today on any matters, we'd ask that you fill out one of these request sheets, provide those to the secretary up here at the front, and we'll take your, please indicate your agenda item, and we'll move, call you when the matter is come up for hearing. One thing we'd request is if you would silence your electronic devices, cell phones, smartphones, I guess nobody has pagers, and if you have any comments that you want to address, we'd ask that you address those to the commission, not necessarily to the applicant, and otherwise keep your comments brief, direct, to the point, and directed to the matter that's before the commission. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. First item up, four, on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the July 18 meeting. I don't think we have the requisite number of people here for that. So Todd and Bob will have to abstain, so that leaves means we only have four to approve a minute. So we'll defer those to our next meeting, which is September 12.
Correct.
Okay. Next, continuance requests.
We have two uncontested requests for continuance today. Item 46 is C 6494, and item 47 is an ordinance amendment. Both of these will be continued until September the 12th. Forty-six and forty-seven.
Commissioners, action on the uncontested continuances?
No approval of the uncontested requests.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the uncontested continuances. Cast your votes. And, one, two, three, four.
Need, need to turn mine on.
Turn Nick on. Okay. Those are approved. All right.
We have a number of new requests for continuance today. Item 14, PC 10342. Item 15, C 6456. Item 19, CE 855. Item 22, PC 10349. Item 23, C 6485. Item 25, PUD 1502. And item 26, PUD 1503. We ask these will be continued until September 12th. Item 28, it's PUD 1501, has been withdrawn. Item 31, C 6487, continue until September the 12th. Item 32, PC 10347, continue until September the 12th. Item 37, C 6496, continue until September the 26th. Item 38, C 6500. Item 40, C 6502. And item 41, C 6505, all to be continued until September the 12th.
Okay. Is there anybody you'd like to speak to on any of the matters who've, on the, these new requests for continuances that were just read?
No new continuance.
Motion is second to move the continuances as read. Cast your votes. Those are approved.
Any additional requests?
Any additional requests for continuance? All right.
We're on the consent docket. Three items on the consent docket today. Item 1, CE 863. Item 2, C 6498. And item 3, PUD SP 1415.
Anybody here to speak to us on any of the matters on the consent docket?
I'll move the consent docket.
Motion is second to approve the consent docket. Cast your votes. That's approved.
On items requiring separate vote, the first item is item 4, DA 23802, an application by Expert Development for consideration of a lot split deed approval on two properties at 12120 North Rockwell Avenue and Ward 8.
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson, on behalf of the applicant. This is a, kind of a remainder piece of property. As you can see, this block has been developed over time as personal storage, a bank, a convenience store, and some retail strip on the south end, which left some tracks that were remaining. The effort here is to split off the long north-south piece, which would then attach to the retail piece on the south, following up with their entrance drive that goes to 122nd Street, leaving the remainder tract to the west available to sell independently of that tract. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, anybody, any questions for Tim? We do have somebody signed up for this one. Tim, any questions for approval? Wait, we got, we got somebody signed up to speak on this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not quite yet.
Oh.
Okay, got it. Mr. George Thompson, you come up, please, sir. State your name, please, sir, and your address.
George Thompson, 10308 Durham Drive, Oklahoma City.
Okay. You've signed up to speak on this application. Would you go ahead?
I did. The church, which bounds this orphan state there on the south end, does not oppose the granting of lot split, but we would request that the commission consider requiring the new owner of that 30-foot strip there to complete the boundary fence, which defines their south line and the church's north line, as part of the, part of the commission's reeling.
We would agree to that.
Okay. Anything else?
Not a thing. We're just glad to get this, this weed being developed.
All right. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Move variance.
Motion is second to approve the variance to TE number one. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Move the application.
Conditioned with completion of the south boundary fence.
Conditioned with the fence being completed, which I believe, probably a requirement before development. Was on the commercial developer anyway.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the application. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Item 5 is V 12-5803. It's an application by Eric Cheatham Construction Company, requesting a variance to the subdivision rigs regarding a certificate of occupancy at 10854 San Lorenzo Drive in the Ria de Bella Edition, Ward 3.
State your name, please, sir?
Eric Cheatham, Eric Cheatham Construction Company. The home has been completed. The subdivision requirements agreed to between the city and the contractors has not, so instead of the normal occupancy procedure, we're requesting you come before you and get that occupancy permit.
Commissioners, obviously nobody's signed up. One thing that we should note about this property is that, Adir was speaking to us, we're going to run out of lots here, and this construction, last bit of construction work has not yet been completed, so I don't know what our answer is. I just think it's something that we're going to have to pay attention to as we watch this process in this particular area.
I noted that as well. I know that there's already been 10 variance requests for completed properties, and I don't necessarily hold out, certainly not Eric or any of the other builders that have come in, or property owners. But I, that too is troublesome, because we could be where we're out of, out of lots, and this final work is not done. Really, that's not, that's something that needs to be done for you and your property owners as well. I'm not singling you out at all, Eric, because we've had, Dusty's been in, and a few other builders have, so, Adir?
Yeah, Adir, I grew up with Public Works. We'd just like to get the drainage improvement. That was part of the agreement. Would the title company be done? Because it's, you know, as the commissioner said, that we're running out of lots, so we need to get that done as soon as possible.
Didn't we?
And we, we don't know, sorry.
Go ahead.
What I was going to tell you, that last we heard that they were going to go ahead and lower the pipes that were required, and I haven't seen any plans, and we're really getting concerned that we're running out of lots.
And I, I guess that's the concern. I thought that when we started on this process of these, you know, single occupancy variances, that we all felt fairly sure that there were only going to be a handful of them before this problem was resolved. And it is, it is, again, not, not singling you out, but it is problematic that we're kind of getting down to the, now there's only a handful of them left, you know?
And in that regard, Ms. Gales, I was under the impression that these variances we granted before were homes that had been permitted and under construction, and now somebody had purchased them and they were looking for a certificate of occupancy. Are we still granting permits in here before all this work is done, and we're builders are building as fast as they can?
There are permits still being issued, yes. And we, of course, we've given a building permit. We did complete all the inspections, so, I mean, it's all been done.
No, I'm not faulting that. What I'm saying is, we knew there was a problem when we started issuing the variances. At that point in time, it was my assumption that we weren't issuing any more permits, but apparently, we're just proceeding as, as normal. The subdivision regulations allow a building permit issue. They, the only thing the subdivision regulation says, if the improvements haven't been installed, the occupancy permit will not be issued. Well, but don't we have some kind of a fair play obligation to, when somebody comes down and asks for a permit, to tell them, "Look, this thing won't fly until you get the infrastructure in, or you need a variance"? You know, I don't think, I don't think it's our charge here to just summarily grant blanket variances forever and let this thing develop out. It's now it's fully developed, every lot's built, occupied, and it has no infrastructure. That, that flies in the face of common sense.
Internally, I do think this is a real problem for us. I mean, an issue, whether it's the left hand not knowing what the right hand's doing, or whatever. And I, I get that they tell them, that, "Oh, yeah, you can go ahead and build," but, you know, if they can't get an occupancy permit when it's done, that's not much of a, of a promise. So I, I think we maybe need to do something about this internally, and my question to Daniel and/or you, Russell, is what can we do about it?
First of all, I think we need to amend the subdivision regulations to prohibit building permits, and not limit it to occupancy permits. That's what the situation is, how this has come up, is because we don't have any authority not to issue the building permit.
Okay.
To do that, I think we need to look at abending the subdivision regulations, prohibit building permits until all the improvements are in.
Then I think we need to start that process forthwith. I mean, I, I don't think that we can tell this gentleman right here, "I'm sorry, but you can't have your certificate of occupancy at this point."
You recently amended the subdivision regulations to do just what, what Dan says, but we don't really, we can't really retroactively apply that to, to this gentleman. Anything in the future, instead of issuing sub-COs, it would be, we would hold building permits.
Do we know whether the building permits have been issued for any of the additional lots, that, the handful that remain?
I don't know. They're continuously building, though, right now.
Yeah. There is still building going on, and there are a number of vacant lots in this section and, in the one to the south there, you know, there's quite a few vacant lots there as well. But that would be the fair thing to do, would be to just restrict building permits and let people that have already gone through the process.
Well, certainly, we, we would not, we can't do that in this particular circumstance. But I agree with you. It's obviously, it's ongoing, because you're there every day.
Is there somebody that can answer that question for us, whether these handful of lots that are, that remain have been permitted yet?
Well, there's not just a handful, so let's not misrepresent what's there. I don't know the number that are actually there, but I drive by this every single day on the way home from work, and so, I mean, there's more than 20 or so, I would surmise, on the north side. On the south side, there's, there's considerably more, because there's a new section. But, but still, I'm kind of on Eric's side. I know that there's probably a builder, developer in this crowd that has a significant financial commitment to this area, based on the number of lots that they own, and doesn't want us to not issue, it doesn't anything to do with us, but doesn't want the city to restrict building permits. But, on the other side, maybe it's time that we put the pressure back on those guys to get the rest of the stuff done. The streets have been done. The streets are to code, I guess. They've been signed off. The other issues, I don't, I can't speak to, because I haven't seen them completed. But I, I do have a sense of compassion for these guys that, you know, this building permit was pulled in September.
I certainly get that.
We agree.
We, I certainly have a, a sense of compassion on them. I just don't know that in March, or April, or May of next year, we're going to be, still be doing this, and we're going to have five or six lots left on the north side of this addition. And, you know, so they're definitely actively building. Like I said, I drive by there. We do, we, we're familiar with that. So I just, I mean, I feel for Eric and these other builders that are building. I just think that the city at some point needs to get a grasp on this, whatever, whatever that is. JJ, it sounds like we're in the process.
I'd point out, we are in litigation with the title company about this, and we do have an agreed order that they will complete the improvements. So we're looking, I mean, it hasn't gone as quickly as we'd like, but we have, and we have filed action to enforce our subdivision bond. So that, I'm relatively certain that that's going to be done fairly soon. But as JJ said, the streets are in, and so we're making progress.
This issue doesn't come up very often at all. It's a relatively rare situation, but you said, Todd, this may be something that we'll be looking at again, and again, and again, and again. And perhaps we ought to look at the amendment to the subdivision regulations, just to avoid this kind of problem coming up everywhere again.
Well, it sounds like we've done that, so the question really is just, remains, you know, whether, whether there are, you know, how many permits are outstanding in this subdivision is really the question I have. Somebody on staff can answer that for us.
How much remains to be done, and when will it be completed?
Right.
And obviously, we don't know the answer to when it will be completed. We know what remains to be done, but...
I mean, after today, there'll be 11 variances for certificates of occupancy, just on, just in this subdivision. I can't say that I've even seen 11 in the time that I've served on the commission all over the city, and so I know this is a unique instance, and I, again, I feel for these guys doing this, and the property owners, getting to this point and going, "Now what do we do?" They have no control, they may not have known the situation. That's not necessarily, you know, Eric Cheatham's job, or Dusty Bourne's job, or, I mean, because they're being told probably the same thing we are, is, sure, it's, it's going to be done, and that's, you know, that's what we're relying on. Having said that, I would go ahead and move approval of the variance.
Motion is second to approve the variance. Cast your votes. It's approved. Move the application.
Thank you.
Oh, that's all we have to do. We don't have to do anything further.
Thank you, Mr. Cheatham.
Item 6 is CE 861, application by Garrett and Company to close portions of streets and alleys in the area of 97th and Northwest 100th Streets and Ward 7.
Mr. Garrett?
How are you doing? How are you doing? Garrett and Company.
Just brief overview, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, just trying to continue our little business mark up there.
Okay. Commissioners, nobody's signed up for this. Any comments for Mr. Garrett?
It doesn't look like you have any residences on these, on these north-south spaces.
No, these are, they've never been opened.
It's, okay. Well, I'll move approval, then.
Motion is second to approve item number 6. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Thank you all.
Item 7 is PC 10350, an application by Meadows 61 to rezone 15912 North MacArthur from PUD 248 to the R1 Single Family District in Ward 8.
I'm Jason Spencer of Crafton Toll, here to represent the applicant. What this application is, it was on 15 acres, located on the east side of MacArthur, south and northwest under 64th, from the current PUD with R1-based zoning to straight R1 zoning. The current PUD that was proposed back in, or was approved back in 1985, had a mix of residential, commercial use, and it hadn't been developed in accordance with that. In fact, out of the original 113 acres, all of it's been rezoned to R1, except for this lot, this remaining 15-acre tract that we requesting to rezone to straight R1 to match in with the character of the zoning around it. Staff has reviewed it and had no comments, and we asked for approval on this application.
Nobody signed up on this. Any questions?
Yes, I answered questions and comments. You all will recall, about a year and a half ago, we approved a plat on this site, which is what's reflected here. Flamin' plat. And there were representations made at the time of that plat, even though we couldn't put them in the plat, that the developer would do a number of things. Today, he has not. One of the things was to improve the entrances into other areas, streetlights, have one common homeowners association. That's fallen apart because of the association failed. This site provides no common area, no support. We approved the final plat that's being built out now on the east end of Steel Meadows. That part is now excluded from the homeowners, existing homeowners association. It has no common areas. I believe this needs to be continued. I believe it needs to come back as a PUD with what they are and are not going to do, because like I said before, we had representations of what would be done, and those things have not come to fruition, for whatever reason. I can't support the straight R1 zoning on this place. We, one of the concessions we made when we approved the plat was to reduce the size of the houses to 2,000 feet from the existing covenant restrictions in the, the rest of the addition. Now they want to comply by themselves. I don't know how they're going to do it. I don't know how they're going to provide amenities. I certainly don't want straight R1 zoning here without any, any controls on it. We know what we have to the north. I don't think it's appropriate for R1 zoning.
Mr. Spencer, you have a comment to that?
I believe the owners here would like to address your comments.
Hello, Commission. Dusty Bourne, 61 80 Bachelor Drive. What we're doing here is, and to speak to your comments, Mr. Gales, about the commitments that we made to the development, that commitment was done around the idea that there would be one homeowners association that would manage and maintain all the common areas within Steel Meadows. For over a year and a half, we have met with and continued to met with, meet with, the president, and the vice president, and the board members, trying to reach a resolution. They recently voted 45 to 1 to not marry the two neighborhoods. And so, part of us, doing the improvements of the entryway and doing those things, was sharing all of the common area within the subdivision, not just what's in Steel Meadows or what's in the proposed reserves. So, we've been working continuously with them. We, it is our intent to marry those, because we think it'll make a better development, because they're connected, they share common roads, they share common entryways, but we do need to have those married, and we've been working with their attorneys and ours, and continuously meeting with them, and even we have another proposal in front of them now.
You have continuously tried to work with them so hard, that you have provided them with covenants, and I have a letter here, or not a letter, but a notice they put out, that the declarant, that would be you, in what you're proposing to this homeowners association, the declarant may unilaterally amend the declaration for any purpose without first giving notice or obtaining the consent of the members, the board, the association, or owner. That's pretty one-sided, don't you think? It goes on this way, you can add additional land to this homeowners association and dump it in, without approval. You can withdraw common area that's already in the association. You can put in marketing, I suppose that's a, a office to, or a model home, and then you have no association funds may be used to challenge, protest, or to object, or otherwise interfere with the declarant's development activities of the property at any municipal meeting or relating thereto. Now, Mr. Bourne, I'll ask you. Is that a one-way street? Is that, and that's the best you could do when you were working with this homeowners association?
I think this, with respect to this, not necessarily arguing this point about your lawyer, what you want in the covenants, that seems to me to be a negotiation between landowners and private landowners, which are not necessarily a part of this application. For us, here's your choices. You get to agree to continuance, give you a little time to see if you can work this out, or we'll entertain a motion, because nobody else is here to speak on it, and we can decide what we want to do. I don't know that we need to get into the discussion vis-a-vis the homeowners association and what your covenants are going to say, et cetera. Not to negate your point that perhaps they're not necessarily continuously agreeing.
I'm not trying to mislead that point. What I'm trying to get across here is that this gentleman has stood before us on the plat a year and a half ago, and he made those same representations to us to get us to approve his flamin' plat on this site. He also promised me that he would try to get the church to allow access on the south side of the church's property. They know nothing of that. So all I'm saying is, what we had to begin with, what we envisioned when we approved the final plat and this flamin' plat, was one homogeneous association, and for him to come up in what I consider to be a disingenuous argument, say, "We've really been trying and working with them," and when I talked with the lady yesterday, and she backed me these points, I couldn't, if I was representing anyone, I couldn't agree to any of these. It, it's a one-sided deal, and when it, when it comes out like that, it's disingenuous for him to stand here before us and say, "Well, we're working with them and doing the best we can."
With all due respect, Mr. Gales, it is not disingenuous, because I am here today, and I am standing in front of the council.
May I finish, please?
Yes, sir.
I don't care. I don't have a dog in this fight. If Mr. Bourne wants to develop his land that he has independently of this, he has a right to do that. If he wants to build a wall around it, as he has threatened to do, and cut off three feet of the existing parking lot of the common area of the clubhouse, he has a right to do that. Okay? What I'm asking him to do is to come to us and tell us what he's going to do, rather than hand us a straight R1 zoning application, and put something in a PUD that will tell us what's going to happen to this land, and how it's going to work.
That said? That said, do you have a motion on this application?
Well, that's a big application.
We'd ask for a continuance, so that we have time. Mr. Gales, I'd like for you to come to that next HOA meeting, so that you can hear firsthand how we are working, and so you can also listen to what the attorneys have to say about why the covenants and restrictions are written the way they are, that we're working with an attorney now that's in the subdivision that's helping to clear up those facts. So if you'd be willing to come to the next meeting, that'd be great, and we'd ask for a continuance.
Well, I'll be happy to do that, if it, if it will be productive.
Absolutely be productive.
When you put the caveat there, that have the attorneys explain the way these are written, if, if things are etched in stone, I'll tell you, I think you're wasting your time. And their vote, what did you say, it was 45 to 1 against adoption? I'm surprised one person voted for it.
How long do you want?
It would take a 30-day, please.
Okay. Motion is second, continue for 30 days. Cast your votes. Continue.
Thank you.
Just before I announce the next case, I just wanted to point out that we're having some system... some system difficulties in being able to display the maps. Staff are working on that behind the scenes, so you may see either no map or at least some delay in the map showing up on the screen. So, we do apologize for that. If necessary, the applicant will describe it all in accurate detail. All right. Item 8 is SP 461. I was directing that to you, Dennis. It's an application by Origin LLC for a special permit to operate a participant recreation and entertainment outdoor golf venue in PUD 62A at 13250 Highland Park Boulevard and Ward 8.
Mr. Box?
Dennis Box here on behalf of the applicants. The individuals that are acquiring this site is a group of local investors. What you have in front of you is a special permit application. This will be a driving range. There'll also be a building constructed, two-story, which will have a restaurant, ABC2, and that's the next application. There are various types of facilities around the country. None of them are identical. Some of them are similar in scope. This is an entertainment venue that we think is in an excellent location. This is a piece of property that was zoned for a PUD back in the early 80s. And as you can tell, you've got retail that fronts up on Memorial Road, and then you also have retail and office that fronts on Pennsylvania. So, we're taking a piece of property that sits inside the Highland Park Boulevard roadway and utilizing it for this venue. And we can agree to all the technical evaluations except for number four. And the only reason number four is a problem is because we have not even thought about or looked at signage. That's something that will come after the fact. Obviously, we'll have to comply with the underlying zoning, but signage is not something that we've put a package together yet on.
I will express Commissioner Bright's concern about a PUD that was passed in 1980 and sign protections that we might find in that one. So, I just thought I'd go ahead and try to speed that along for you there, Bob.
I was involved in that, and I can tell you, it's a very good pod.
So, what do we propose on signs, Dennis? How do you want to handle this? We obviously have an interest in that area. There's not much signage out there off the main portion of the highway, so I think there's an opportunity for good signage here. So, what's your thought on that?
My thought is, if you all are okay with the concept of what we're asking for on the special permit, we have a case in front of the council in approximately a couple of weeks, the same item. What I'd like to do is, we'll put a sign package together and we'd agree to come back and let you all approve our sign package when the time's right. We're just not ready to, you know, agree to. I can tell you, monument signs might work, might not work. I mean, there's not a lot of conflict on signage on Highland Boulevard, but it's something that we'll have to just look at and then bring back before you. And if that is a concern, then maybe we put in the minutes that you all, if you all are okay with our special permit lesson except signage, then I'll try to get my client to come up with signage that the council can look at, and they'll actually have the actual signage to approve. But we don't have it right now.
I think I might be more comfortable with having them subsequently come back to have it approved.
I think that's the better-
Just kicking the ball down the road to the council.
I think that's probably a good idea. Your number one.
Well, I'll agree with that, except that in looking at the area for where your property is, and I know that you want a 50-foot pole sign with flashing lights so that you can see it from the highway, right?
No. We will agree to no 50-foot flashing signs.
Well, if a proposal comes back with a 50-foot pole sign with flashing lights, that's really not going to work because this is an isolated area. People are going to know where that is. It's a clubhouse. It's a restaurant, bar, et cetera. And you can deal with lots and lots of lower signs. Mr. Gales just put a 45 feet. Well, no. So, if we have an understanding that it has to be significantly reduced from what PUD, what was it, 64 would allow, I agree with that. And in that connection, I'll approve the application with the exception of the signage.
Okay. So, which is going to, you're going to bring a sign package back for our review, right?
It'll be another application, I assume, but-
It will be this. What will happen is, this will go to the council. If the council approves it, the special permit will be approved subject to the condition that we come back and get approval from the planning commission on signage.
That's my motion. Okay? Motion is second to approve item. It is conditioned. Cast your votes. It's approved.
And item 9 is an ABC application for the same project.
And we'd ask your approval. This is an ABC, as noted, and we anticipate we'll have probably two different venues. And it's my understanding that some of the time when people are hitting golf balls, they like to have a Coke or things in a Coke. And so, that's our proposal.
Okay. No approval. Motion is second.
The ABC 61,000 square feet.
Yes. If you're golfing, you will have the ability to have food and/or you'll have the ability to order a drink. If you're ordering pizza, you can do the same. So, even though the building's large, we intended to cover the entire building. It is not an ABC3, so we don't have to worry about a club problem. But it's just the size of the building. That's how it ended up that large.
Wow. I guess, you know, I'm being supportive of that. Only with respect to this use. I mean, and that's a problem for us in terms of our-
Yeah.
ABC overlay system. 61,618 square feet is a lot of alcohol sales. You know, if this use fails, that would be a lot of square footage for the next use.
My one consolation on that, Dennis, I raised the same issue. And when you look at the diagram with all the little separate swap where you're hitting balls from and presumably eating and the ABC fence drinking, you get a lot of square footage. I don't believe we can condition it to just a golf driving range. However, if you look at this structure-
It's big.
And I wanted to turn it into a good old-fashioned rear joint. It'd be very difficult just because of the layout and the architecture. And that was my one-
So, you're saying that as a practical matter, that the size and shape, shape in particular of the structure would really not permit conversion easily?
That was my thought. That was the consolation I had on the 61,000 feet. Because that's the first thing I thought of. Well, how do you limit the amount of the overlay? You know, if we go to recall, when we did the overlay on the ballpark, they wanted it on the entire ballpark. And we said, "Well, what's the white fielder that's going to be out there drinking beer between innings?" And they said, "Well, no, but if we have a special event, we'll set things up in the outfield." The same thing here, except it's not the outfield. It's all in the building. And frankly, I don't know what else you could, what you would convert it to.
Okay. So, do we have a motion? Good now, Dennis? I mean, I'm understanding your concerns, but you're, okay. That's well said. Motion is second to approve item 9. Cast your votes. It's approved.
And on item 8, I understand my parameters, was it 51 feet or 53? I don't know how to respond. I wanted to wait until the item was approved. But yeah, I understand where you're-
Just go ahead and do 60.
In case you didn't know, there's a longstanding discussion on signs at these meetings. Item 10 is SPD 722, an application by Patrick Pipkin to rezone 1540 Northwest 3rd Street from R3 Medium Density Residential to SPD 722 in Ward 6. Mr. Pipkin here.
Applicant present on this.
Put it at the end.
Passage to the here for now. Okay?
Item 11 is SPD 723, an application by County Line Self-Storage, rezone 9155 Northwest Expressway from PUD 922 to SPD 723 in Ward 1.
My name's Charles Allen. Allen Engineering, the owner's here also, and the contractor. The purpose of this spud is to allow us to, instead of having a site-proof fence, to use the back of our RV buildings as the site-proofing and then allowing then the landscaping to be viewed from the residents around the property. I think we have one email from a property owner that was requesting a fence to control trash from the facility. We don't really, we don't have dumpsters here. This isn't where you'll bring your RV, service it. That'll all be done off-site. So, really don't see any, it will be all fencing closed, but I don't see generating any trash that's going to offend the neighbors. With that, is there any questions? The owner, like I said, is here to answer questions and the contractor also.
Mr. Allen, no one's signed up on this. Any questions? Mr. Allen?
No approval.
Motion is second to approve item number 11. Cast your votes. That item is approved.
Thank you.
Item 12 is SPD 724, an application by Robert and Amy Treese to rezone 12310 Northwest Expressway from AA Agricultural to SPD 724 in Ward 1.
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates representing the applicants. And the Treese family are here. This is a unique application. It's a spud that allows for the use of a reconstructed historic barn on a piece of property that's been recently registered on Historic Register. If you all saw the paper last Saturday, there was discussion about Chisholm Trail and the Grindstaff family. These are the family of the Grindstaff family. And Ms. Amy Treese would like to talk a little bit about what the project means to them.
State your name, please, ma'am, and your address.
Okay. My name is Mari Treese, and I live at 12520 Northwest Expressway. I am the sixth-generation descendant to obtain the land that we are proposing to rezone. May I approach to give you all a visual aid? Okay. What's coming around is a picture of my great-great-great-grandparents' original home and barn. Below it now is a picture of the original home and now the barn that we have rebuilt. My great-great-great-grandparents, James and Sarah McGranyhan, came to Oklahoma Territory 21 years prior to the run of 1889. James worked in the government service just after the close of the Civil War. James drove a mule team with Custerden and Sheridan in their winter campaigns. James later went on to serve as the pre-opening postmaster of Oklahoma Station, which is now Oklahoma City. The McGranyhans are also credited for opening the first hotel downtown, the Aobika Hotel. The land that my ancestors once occupied is at the intersection of highways 3 and 4, or better known as Northwest Expressway and Piedmont Road. The land has been virtually untouched and still contains my ancestors' original home and now replica of their barn. In fact, the land itself has just been added to the state and federal registration of historic places as a documented crossing of the Chisholm Trail. There are even preserved buffalo wallows from yesteryear that remain sacred ground to my family. With the area around us growing at a rapid pace, my family and I want to do our best to ensure that my ancestors' land stays within our family. I want my children and their children to appreciate our family heritage as opposed to seeing dollar signs for a land value. We hope to do this by opening up the barn for special events such as weddings. We would like to share with the community our ancestors' history as well as younger generations the importance of preserving Oklahoma land. The land that has remained in my family for 127 years signifies the past and the future. And while we are hesitant to turn it into commercial property, our true intent is to preserve the days of the past and to share with the community a part of Oklahoma history. We really appreciate your support.
Ms. Treese and Tim, you can stand. Now, your family still owns the land that surrounds this property. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. And you still live out, live out there?
Yes. We surround all the land around it as well.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we clarified that particular point. Mr. Tim, do you have any additional comments?
I'm just going to make the comment, there are no technical valuations from the staff, and we've just requested your approval of this.
Chairman, my only comment, I support the whole thing, is that why do you need a mobile home use? I wouldn't, I don't see there is any reason in the world for that.
That's a good question. Mr. Gales asked me that as well.
Can we delete it?
No. The purpose of it is to, in case they're having a reception or something out there that they need to have a mobile kitchen brought in to provide service for a meal or something like that, that use unit would cover that.
Really? You mean like a food truck that comes in?
Well, it wouldn't necessarily be a food truck.
And that's a use unit that's under this 8200.7?
That's, our understanding and dealing with the staff is that's what we needed to add. If it's different than that, we can modify it.
Well, okay. Here's my larger question. The thing we approved at the downtown air park, you know, it's now a concert venue, and you've got food trucks coming in there. Is that approved for mobile homes?
No.
No?
No. I don't think he needs a mobile home residential use unit for that. I think that would just be accessory to-
I just wouldn't want to open the door for any kind of like, "Well, you approved mobile homes on this particular part. Now let's go do it for the rest of it." And I don't see in the world how that relates to catering food trucks, et cetera.
I think we can come up with some language to-
And I'd be happy to take that use unit out as long as we put the language in. That would provide for-
Restricted only to-
Right. For the service of-
Food trucks and service trucks.
Various things that-
That'd be fine with me.
Yep. And we'll agree to that.
Okay. Motion is-
So, with that, I approve the application with the exception on the use unit 8200.7 that that's limited to food trucks and catering vehicles.
We would agree to that.
All right.
I'll second that. I have a question, Tim. This, what you're asking for and having receptions, is this going to, will there be any effect with a wedding reception that would want to serve wine, beer? Is that an issue with your client, or is that included?
My understanding, again, I'll fall back on the staff, is that would require separate licensing by the provider.
Okay.
So, they're not asking for an ABC permit? It's the question we, I raised when I met with the Treeses regarding that. So, I'd get around that in a different way, which would obviously be important to that business. Okay. Motion is second to approve item 12 as conditioned. Cast your votes. It's approved. Thank you very much.
Item 13 is PUD 1504, an application by Trinity Baptist Church to rezone 624 North Cemetery Road from AA Agricultural and PUD 1038 to PUD 1504 in Ward 3.
Jason Spencer with Craft and Toll here to represent the applicant.
Jason Spencer with Craft and Toll, who represents the applicant. What we've got is a rezoning application for 35 acres, east side of Cemetery Road, south of 100, or south of Northwest 10th Street, sorry. It's currently a P U D with a C1 base zoning. It consists of a church, and then most of, the rest of it's undeveloped. What we desire to do is expand the church campus west to include an office, retail, and independent living areas, so it's divided up into two tracks. One track will have C1 base zoning, and the other track in the P U D will be R4 base zoning. Basically, it'll take its access off of Cemetery Road, and it is in an area that's designated for open growth, and we meet in conformance with that, and staff has recommended approval. However, we do ask that we remove T E number 3, which is concerning age restriction on the multifamily. What we're looking at is, is we want, they want the ability to be able to have, you know, a younger family member living adjacent to an older family member that may be there, and that's the reason for that.
Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Spencer? Any comments regarding the age restriction? So, you have on track 2, two-family residential.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Now, what does that mean exactly? Is that duplex?
The intent is to have duplexes, but it'll be all on the, you know, one commonly-owned lot where the homeowners or association will maintain the lots and all that, it won't be so divided into lots, so that's why we're looking for the R4 base zoning there.
Any other questions, commissioners? Or somebody signed up to speak to us on this? If not, I'll ask Mr., or Mr. Heaton to come up. Kim Heaton?
My name is Kim Heaton, I'm one of the homeowners in the neighborhood that you see there next to the proposed development. I'm here today to oppose it, I don't really have a lot of information, other than my concerns about what they're doing. We don't have any information about what they're building, other than what you've heard here today and what you see up there, and can't tell the quality of what it is, or I can't tell what's gonna be next to my street. I live in one of the cul-de-sacs that backs up to the complex, so I'm about four lots from what they're gonna develop. And I live in that neighborhood that ironically enough, I understand, was sold to the developers by the church that wants to develop that now for retail and office and duplexes. And I have a substantial investment in my home, so I just wanted to share my concerns with you and, and let you know that I oppose that as it is proposed.
Ma'am, has there been any communication with the surrounding homeowners and landowners that you know, or obviously you haven't had any, but?
No. And there could have been with some of the homeowners, but no one that lives immediately on, on my street. I don't really have a close relationship with the rest of the homeowners in the neighborhood. And there is a homeowners' association, but it's ran by a management company in Edmonds, so we don't really have good communication there either.
Do you know if there's been any attempt to discuss with the neighbors what's going on?
I'm not aware, we haven't heard any concerns, but I'm not.
I didn't ask, heard concerns, has there been an attempt by the applicant?
It's been made by the applicant, I don't know at this time.
There is a bit of concern, I mean, I guess to Ms. Heaton's point with respect to what's actually going to be built there, I will note that we did have a very fulsome view of the sign, however, we got virtually nothing on the proposed construction. I find that a bit interesting. I, I don't know how we, what are, how we choose to deal with that, but it does seem, this is an, I mean, it is, look, as I look at it, looks like it's Class C or better roofing, 35 feet in height, generally looks like a residential-type construction, although I don't have significant assurances of that. 70-cent brick, 30-foot EFIS, et cetera, what we would normally expect. But I don't see any particular elevations or anything like that regarding what this might look like, and it is moving right next door to a residential area that is not going to, is not yet operated as a residential area. I would agree with your comment there, Mr. Gales.
I'd like to add too, you know, the, the P U D does have screening requirements in there, and also a landscape buffer that'll be located on the south and east where it's gonna, about the residential, and another 20-foot landscape buffer on Cemetery Road.
Yes, how we might choose to deal with that, how I would choose to deal with it would be to ask the developer to take a continuance and organize a meeting with the neighbors, give them some information, and see if you can allay their concerns, and you might find it to your benefit to provide us with some elevations, so that we can see what you're really talking about doing out there.
Okay. In that case, then we'll request a continuance on this to the next meeting, if that's okay?
September 12?
Yes.
Okay.
Moving continuance to September 12.
Motion to second to continue item 13 to September 12 to allow for discussion with the neighborhood and provide adaptations, cast your vote. Thank you, Mr. Spencer, thank you.
Items 14 and 15 have been continued. Item 16 is C 6499, which is a preliminary plat of the enclave at Griffin Park, Ward 8.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chris Anderson with SMC Consulting Engineers representing the developer. We have read the staff report, agree with the TEs, and just request approval of the preliminary plat.
Commissioners, nobody signed up on this?
No approval.
Motion to second to approve this item, cast your votes. You're approved, thanks Chris.
Item 17 is the final plat of the same project.
Again, Chris Anderson representing the developers, same thing, we've read the staff report, agree with TEs, and request approval of the final plat.
Again, Commissioners, anybody signed up on this one?
Well, my favorite bet fee, Chris. I have no problems with this plat, okay, I'll tell you that right now, no problem. But I'd just hate to see the preliminary and the final come together. Please don't do that if you can help it. Move approval.
Thank you. Motion to second to approve item 17, cast your votes. It's approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 18 is C 6443, which is a preliminary plat of Crystal Hill Estates in Ward 3.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Callcord Drive, on behalf of the applicant, also with me is Jason Spencer. This is a preliminary plat that conforms to the P U D. This is a P U D that was recommended for denial by the planning commission, and we made some significant changes between the time we were here and council. We agreed to, around the perimeter of the development, we will have a stockade fence with brick columns in between. We've now committed to a pool and cabana, put that into our P U D document, as well as a walkway between track 3 and the commercial corner. So with that, the, the plat is recommended for approval. I do need to address two of the technical evaluations. Number 3 and 5, 3 we would ask to be deleted. That was negotiated at city council, and we came up with a solution that my client agrees to pay $25,000 into the general fund, essentially like a fee in lieu, and it was the design that we showed in that agreement that the city council approved the P U D. Number 5, the open space requirement, there was a lot of discussion at the council on this item, and what we agreed to do was to do one large upscale common area on the western portion of this. What we agreed to do was a pool and cabana, it's accessible to everybody within the development, and TE number 5 is in conflict with the P U D that is, was approved by council and on file. So with that, we are in agreement with the rest of the TEs, and we would ask for your approval.
Okay, so on the east tract, tracks 2 and 3.
Yes, sir.
As I, as I look at the map, this is part of our staff report, I see three very small common areas. Right?
Yes.
One, one kinda up here, one back down on County Line, looks like a little pocket area, or half a lot, looks like there, right, right as you come in, and then a little triangle lot right there also, right?
Yes, sir.
Correct, is there any others? You'll have to look close, Dave.
The main common area is over to the west.
Right.
Which is where, which I believe we have, total common area, we exceed what the subrags would require. I think we have 2.55, and the subrags would require somewhere around 2.3. We just would rather centralize it in one location to have a pool and a clubhouse that we think provides for a better community than three small pocket parks with a park bench and a gazebo, and call that an amenity, and meet the subrags.
Now, David, I'm confused.
Yes, sir.
You just said, "we would rather do it this way with the large common area." I appreciate that, but now I wanna go back to what you said earlier, that this large common area was actually amended into and adopted in the P U D in the ordinance that the council passed?
I believe the P U D document has an exhibit that references the plat map that you see before you, and that was what we approached council with, our recommendation for the common area. So the plat map that you see and the location of the common area was part of our P U D document, and there was significant discussion on why we preferred the one common area to the west, rather than three smaller scattered throughout.
Well, this may be a theoretical point, but if we already have an approved P U D incorporating a large common area, and now we're at the preliminary plat stage, why are we monkeying with it? I mean, does the left hand not know what the right hand's doing here, or, I'm troubled with it, what appears to be, that we're just backpedaling over previous issues?
The P U D, the language in the P U D states that the common area will be dispersed anywhere within the P U D, so it's, the language in the P U D is not specific where the common area will be. But David is right, the exhibits presented at council are the exhibits you have here.
And the council had discussion, obviously, on the.
Right.
It's not what we would have done, I think.
It's not what we would have done, but I guess my theoretical question is, okay, now that that P U D provides for the large common area, we decide we wanna change it at the plat level, which council is not gonna, going to get to see again, does that require us to have a P U D amendment?
One of the issues at, at council was, this tract, the entirety was zoned straight R1, and, and so what we came in with was something that we at least felt was better than what we could develop a straight R1. We committed to all brick homes, we committed to the fence around the perimeter with brick columns, and we committed to pools that otherwise this development wouldn't have had committed to.
I, I get the commitment level, I, the thing that concerns me about, just from a land use and a plat and a look at standpoint, is access to the common area is, is not at all easy, nor intuitive, nor probably at all intuitive to the guy that's in here in Lot 26 in the far northeast corner, right off of Crystal Clear Lane. You know, the point being is that it appears, the layout of the, of the particular, of the plat, is somewhat of a have-and-have-not layout. I mean, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to not, that it doesn't become patently obvious to you as you look at it. So I, I get your point, I understand the develop, you're, we can put it anywhere, I get it, but it, you know, central to me would have been down here on Emerald Knoll Road. Not, you're using the term central, I understand that, I, I look at that more as a location, which would have been more centrally located toward the middle of the plat, but I think that's the point.
And to the access, you know, when this was originally filed, the track 1 and track 2 had no connection, so between that time and now, we now have vehicular connections throughout the entire plat, as well as there'll be sidewalks throughout the entire plat. So no matter where you are in the neighborhood, you can either drive to the common area and/or walk to the common area.
Well, Mr. Chairman, based upon J.J., your, your comment that the P U D has been amended or whatever it is right now, isn't specific about where the common area should be, that it's within the P U D, that there's this much. I agree that there's, this is a rather incongruous location for the common areas that serve this massive number of little small lots on the east side, that there's no common areas in there, there's one little trail that leads from those areas into the western side. For that reason, and for the reason I think that it's incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood, it needs to be redesigned, there's no connectivity to the, the C3 corner that we've talked about for years, about having some sort of pedestrian access to the C3 corner. I don't see anything that goes in there, and for that reason, I don't know what council did, but I can't support this.
If I can, the P U D actually does commit to pedestrian access to the commercial tract, and I addressed that.
But it's not here.
It's not there, but it has to be done in accordance with the P U D, so it, there will be there. At the final plat stage, there will have to be a connect, a pedestrian connection, and the P U D expressly states that. So this is just a preliminary plat, the final plat will have to show that connection. And we believe that the TE should not have been included, it is in conflict with what the P U D actually says.
Separate apart from the issue of whether or not the TE should have been included, I mean, I, if you, if you start up in the northeast corner, the little sort of triangular-shaped lot there, I think it says 26, I should have my glasses on, and try to wind your way to where the pool is going to be, it's like one of those games you get on the back of a menu. I just don't think this is a very good design for the ease of use of these common areas. It's wonderful that you're going to do a pool and that sort of thing, I think every neighborhood ought to have one, but it has to be accessible in order to be useful.
Well, let's talk about accessibility. One of the big things in our city is walkability, so what I'm, what I'm hearing is, we want a direct straight line to get there from every house, but also, we don't want a lot of straight streets. So no matter where you live, you can walk out your front door, and you walk down the sidewalk, and you get there.
I'm sorry, but I did not say I wanted a direct straight line, what I said was, this is very inaccessible, and those are two kind of different things. If you start at that corner and work your way down and around to where the pool is, you have to go down 45th Street to Emerald Knoll, and then turn at 45th Street, and then turn again at, I can't even read that, is it something Bluff? And then you go down and around to 46th Street, 48th Street, and then back up again, I mean, it's, it's very convoluted.
You could go straight down southwest 45th Terrace, all the way to Prominence Drive, and then go straight down, and you're at the clubhouse. And this is not uncommon, large, lots of large neighborhoods that have sidewalks.
So you'll have access there?
Absolutely, there're sidewalks connecting the entire development.
Well, that's a little better.
I'm sitting here counting six commissioners and two people that aren't in favor of this, and some confusion on the TEs, and whether the TE should be there or not. You maybe like to continue this, and see the next time if we see it, if those TEs are still there, and you could perhaps address some of the connectivity. still there, uh, and you could perhaps address some of the connectivity issues and some of the other issues that have been raised?
We will, we will take a continuance, but we, we again state, there, there aren't issues with connectivity, the entire thing is connected, this is absolutely 100% consistent with the PUD that was approved by city council.
And perhaps you could bring us some exhibits demonstrating that, and allay our confusion?
This, this is the exhibit that we presented city council, and, um, but we...
Well, maybe they're brighter than we are, and we need a little more help.
We will take the continuance.
I think, um, they'll vote on the continuance first, I'm sorry, go ahead. So move?
Motion to second to continue item 18 to September 12, cast your votes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the difficulty of this particular, um, application was that it came to us and was recommended for denial. There were, in the applicant's terms, significant changes made before it went to, to city council, and there it was approved, with some discussion and negotiation. It comes back to us in sort of a different incarnation as a plat, and the city, the staff, the planning staff doesn't just stop what they do, they don't stop planning because council has approved something that may not be consistent with, you know, our policies, so I don't, I don't think it's quite fair to, to put off on them and say, "Well, there shouldn't be these TEs there," and clearly the, the planning policies that apply still apply.
I'm not suggesting the TE shouldn't be there, what I was suggesting is...
That comment was not directed at you.
David made the statement that it was in direct conflict with the PUD. I don't believe, and I haven't looked at the PUD, but I don't believe the staff intentionally put a TE in there that is in direct conflict with the PUD.
Well, and I have had recently some, some, uh, experience, uh, in a very real way, with exhibits that are attached to things and get approved, and, um, are not referenced directly in the document itself, and then permits are issued and things go awry, and so, I don't think the fact that there's an exhibit that looks like this plat that's attached to the PUD is sufficient to answer all these questions.
Well, and, and that was my point, you know, like I said, I don't believe the staff put the TE in there to be in direct conflict, but if they did, then maybe they want to take it out, but I, I doubt it.
Okay, let's move forward. Russell?
Item 19 has been continued, item 20 is S.P.U.D. 718, application by Raunak Eman, on-go express to rezone 2410 Northeast 23rd Street from R4, General Residential to S.P.U.D. 718 and Ward 7.
Julie Landis, I represent the applicant, and we're here, continued from the July, uh, July 18th meeting, and since then, we have, um, worked with planning staff and have reduced the number of permitted uses in this S.P.U.D. from 22 to the nine that you see there, in answer to Commissioner Williams asking that they be more tailored to our intended use.
Have you had an opportunity to meet with, again, with, um, Commissioner Williams?
We have emailed back and forth, um, the things that he's asked for, we haven't sat down with him, no, but we've been in communication.
And has he expressed his view of the application as it stands currently?
Not to me, he's asked me for things and I've sent them over, that's, that's been what has occurred to this point.
As I recall the, go ahead, JJ.
I was going to talk to James, and he was satisfied with the uses that are in the PUD now.
Okay, and I think that was his primary concern from last meeting. Okay, any action on this? Are there questions of Ms. Landis?
Move approval.
Nope.
I've got a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, is this a 24-hour-a-day operation?
Did we get that answered? I think that the, uh, we asked the proposed buyer that question, and he does not know at this time. He doesn't anticipate that it will be, but he, his answer to me was, "That's a business decision that he has not made yet."
This has, uh, obviously, a direct impact on the residents that live next door to this, uh, with, with the attendant noise, fumes, whatever. I think it's important for us to know, or at least for me to know before I vote for this, of exactly what it is you intend to do, for how long.
Right, his intention at this point is for it to not be 24-hour operation. What his exact hours of operation are, I don't know.
Well, I believe at our previous hearing...
Right.
...representation was made that it was not known, but it was presumed that it could be 24 hours, so I believe you ought to be looking at it as a 24-hour operation. I believe that's how James was looking.
And if you, if it's not restricted, I think you have to look at it that way.
Well, no, but I mean, from a prior meeting, uh, when we were talking about it at a prior meeting, the, the assumption was it would be 24 hours.
Well, then, then, in that connection, if it's assumed that it's going to be, isn't there some sort of requirement for either reduction of lights that would shine on the neighborhood, at least, or some, you know, we did that with that Sonic on 23rd Street, you know, it's a 24-hour operation, and it affected the neighbors that are next door to it. I mean, just some sort of protection of the neighborhood, people that are living next door to it, I believe that, JJ, isn't that built in?
Yeah. Well, in fact, since the approval of the Sonic on 23rd, the code's been amended to incorporate some lighting standards...
Yeah.
That do, that are...
Aren't we with a 24-hour operation? Is that in the ordinance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's in the PUD, in section four of the, of our staff report, page five, with respect to the lighting restrictions, 20-foot-high fixtures, uh, 14-high on, um, pedestrian scale, and then some illumination considerations for both, both sets of lights. I think we've gotten better at that, Bob, since the Sonic.
That really?
As a city.
That was a bad, that was a bad decision.
Yeah.
Well, because, Mike, we didn't ask the question.
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
And so that's where you...
I agree.
But if it's assumed and if it was represented with this and before, and as long as there are whatever controls there are within, uh, the PUD, uh, I'm moving in favor of that.
Before you do that, JJ, are there similar restrictions on, um, outdoor speakers that are just now required by code, or are those spelled out in the PUD? I'm not finding that.
I don't believe there's any restriction or mention of outdoor speakers in the PUD, there's, there is a city noise ordinance that would, that would be, that is in place.
Which is not adequate for this, this...
Are you contemplating outdoor speakers?
No.
Would you agree to limit, to delete that, the ability to use outdoor speakers?
Well, no, wait, what about outdoor car pumps?
Oh, you're right.
I mean, typically on these...
Yeah, they do have outdoor speakers on it, that's a good point.
Outdoor speakers actually at the pump and not overhead, or something like that, now I'm just, I'm just...
I'm thinking of the drive-through, I, I bet some of them have now. That some of them have now.
I just don't want to limit the...
No, that's a good point.
The, the developer's not said anything about outdoor speakers. That's not been a discussion, so that's...
But I think, again, if, if it's not limited, you have to assume that they're going to be permitted, and it could be used at some point. If, if you're willing to, I mean, I, I totally understand what Todd's referring to, and yes, every, every gas pump's got a little speaker in it nowadays, but that's not the concern that I have, the concern that I have is...
Well, why can't we just add a TE saying, uh, outdoor speakers are limited to the speakers in the inside pump?
And if you're willing to do that, it's fine.
I don't know that we have an issue with that.
Let's do that.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, I don't know that that needs to say "in," but it should say "in" or "at" the pump, I just don't, I, I don't want to make him buy something that, I don't know, I just think that's probably...
Staff will come up with the right language for us, I feel certain.
Okay. I think we're, we can, we got a motion on this, or do we have a motion?
Motion with the addition of that TE, yes.
Okay, motion to approve item 20 with the additional TE added with respect to the use of outdoor speakers, limited to that associated with gas pumps or gas ordering, et cetera. Okay, cast your votes, it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 21 is S.P.U.D. 710, application by MTFV LLC to rezone 8731 South McKinley Avenue from R1 Single Family to S.P.U.D. 710 and Ward 5.
Good afternoon again, Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates on behalf, on behalf of the applicant. Let me give you a little background on this, we've been working on this for about five or six months, and to the neighborhood's credit, they've been very patient, uh, there was some bad blood between the developer of PUD 1414 and the application for this, uh, project, and we have worked fairly diligently with the neighbors, and they've been very patient, and we believe we have a resolution that, uh, everybody is, uh, okay with. The, uh, part of what we agreed to do is, when we entered into this case, was we went back and looked at PUD 1414, we actually inspected the property and made some comments relative to its implementation, and the developer has agreed to make certain corrections to the existing project, and one of those was, some of their trees got planted and, and died, so those, those are going to be replaced, but since it's outside the limits of this PUD, uh, that's a side agreement that we've made with them. Uh, with regard to this specific tract, it's an old abandoned house, it's been, uh, abandoned for a number of years, it's been acquired, and, uh, we have been working, uh, to add to the existing use there, which is a personal storage project, the ability for some outdoor storage. Uh, as you can see on this map, the darker shaded colors are everything, are uses that are other than residential. You can see that the projects around, the church is a, a very large church, a lot of parking lot, um, and so we've been really working very closely with the, uh, property owners on either side of our tract, and here and here, because they're mostly affected, and the, we've met with this property owner and several others in the neighborhood, uh, dealing with various issues with drainage and things like that, that are going to be remediated. Uh, specifically for this, uh, S.P.U.D., we've limited the use to outdoor storage as a height restriction, uh, we're allowing only an exit onto McKinley, uh, our fence along McKinley will be, uh, constructed back at the building limit line, so that it doesn't take away from the, uh, front line of these building limit lines of the two houses on either side of us. Uh, this is an old rural area that has never been urbanized, it doesn't have sewer, uh, its water service is limited, uh, to a small line on McKinley, there has been some new residential development, but it's been, oh, half a mile or three-quarters of a mile north of here, because that's where the sewer stops. So these are old, uh, rural estate homes that, uh, were built probably in the 50s. The, the gentleman to our south has spent a lot of money renovating his house, uh, and it's a very nice little house, and so we've been working very closely with them. So, bottom line is, we have agreed to limit our height to 12 feet along both of these residents, and along this property line, which is not in the document, I will add that to the document, it got left out, I apologize, but I did tell them I would put it on the record today, and it'll be included in the, uh, SPUD that it goes to council. Uh, we have agreed to, uh, a landscape buffer with, uh, 12-foot-tall canopy trees, uh, on 10-foot centers, uh, heavy landscaping out front with an exit-only driveway, an eight-foot wooden fence, solid wooden fence around the perimeter, um, and it would be used only for parking of, uh, outdoor storage, such as RVs, things like that. The, um, all the landscaping is required to be irrigated, it's not an option, and the, some of the old landscaping that, uh, died off on the previous plat will also be included in that irrigation, so we're going to try and fix some of the sore spots that were left behind on the previous project. Um, I don't know that anybody signed up, I, I know that the people that I've been talking to said they were not going to be here today, uh, that they trusted that what we've all agreed to would go forward, and that's what we're presenting to you. Uh, with regard to the staff's comments, we have, uh, five TEs, uh, one we agree with, two suggest that we do not develop the east 136 feet of the lot, uh, as what we've proposed. However, uh, in looking at this and discussing it even with the property owners, it's just not a practical application for a new home to be constructed in this site. It's not, doesn't have sewer, uh, the size of the lot does not lend itself to coming in and building a new home that could be mortgaged in this area. So you'd really have to want to live in the proximity of older homes to build a new house here. Uh, it's just not a practical application, so we would request that TE be, TE2, number two be eliminated, and we agree with the three, four, and five, and they're already included in the SPUD. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Stand up to speak.
No. Do you have any concern?
Uh, no, I was actually going to compliment Tim a little bit, I, I appreciate the, um, effort that you've made here. Clearly, there were some issues that you inherited, and some that are just inherent to the application, and I, I think that if there is no one here today, it's probably, you know, a tribute to that effort, and, and I appreciate it. So, I guess with that, I'll move approval. Yes, deleting TE number two. Maybe I should ask before I do that, staff, if that's problematic, given the explanation? I'll ask you.
Russell, you want to speak to that?
When we saw this in the established, uh, residential line along that street, um, I might disagree with Tim about the viability of constructing a, a home there, I mean, um, all those other homes are in existence, so I don't see why the age of those would be, uh, problematic, although, uh, you know, our concern is that you're establishing that commercial use, and that lends pressure to the other residential areas, uh, other residences, uh, in that area, those were our concerns.
So, do you think that with the, the, um, efforts that they're making then to ameliorate that impact, that it would be especially problematic to eliminate TE2?
Um, well, we, we would prefer that, um, that TE be retained, but, uh, I understand the efforts that Mr. Johnson has made to, uh, provide that outreach, um, nobody did show up, although there is a petition attached to the staff report, um, so I don't, I don't have anything contrary, other than what Tim is telling us today, there's nothing written, so that...
I didn't request them to withdraw their petition, uh, but I've met with all, I'd say most, if not all, of the names on that petition, uh, about four times over the process the last six months.
Well, and I, I understand what you're saying too, I, I assumed that you wouldn't have put it in there if you didn't think it was, it was relevant, but nonetheless, I am going to move approval for the elimination, TE number two.
I've, I've already seconded that, but I want to, you know, part of what allows me a little bit of peace with this, and, and I, I certainly understand that, I won't say it's Russell's point, but the city's point, um, the issue that I have on the contrary is that the homeowners that are located on either side, uh, Tim and I have been in contact with each other, I certainly haven't visited with them, nor have they called me to say we have a big problem with this. The problems that they had, I believe, were with, were in the past, with, uh, some issues that had been, uh, not been handled appropriately. Uh, Tim has a huge burden on his shoulders, because now he's going to have to make sure all this stuff is done, he's done some convincing of his client, uh, in order to be at this point, and made some concessions, and, um, that's why I will vote, move approval, I'll second that, Janice.
Motion and a second to approve item 21, uh, deleting TE number two. Is it 21?
21.
Yep, cast your votes.
Thank you.
Items 22 and 23 have been continued, item 24 is ED 202, application by Campbell Industrial Park to dedicate a street and utility easement for Oklahoma Court at, uh, near northeast 70th Street and Ward 7. Your shoulders should be a lot more sloped than they are.
They're pretty sloped. Uh, while the picture's coming out, this is a, uh, a little bit of a unique application, and I can... I can understand the staff and our original discussions, they wanted us to provide a plat for this, and under normal circumstances, I would agree with that, what's not shown up there is immediately adjacent to where the street's going to the south, on the west side, there's been a three-acre tract that's excluded from the ownership of our client, who owns the rest of the property, that would be served by this street. The unique thing is that they're going to do build-to-suit all leased property, and so we'll be providing public utilities, independent water and sewer attachments, but because they're leased tracks, you wanted the flexibility of if some of those leased tracks change or buildings expand, they want the ability to expand that without having to adjust lot lines in the future, so that's why you have the ED in front of you the way it is. The plans have been approved, the project's ready to go forward. I will also mention to you that as this property has developed, it was rezoned as I-1, I want to say nearly a year ago, the properties to the north of 70th Street are already I-1 and have been developed over the last year to year and a half, as the two major contractors have offices there. We're working on a project to the east of this that's going to be a industrial warehouse building. To the west, there's an oil company going right on the corner of Santa Fe and 70th Street, so there's a lot of development that's occurred on the street. One of the staff's technical evaluations is that we consider improving 70th Street to an industrial standard. While all the development, as I just mentioned, north of this has gone on without any improvements required to the 70th Street, which is a two-lane rural road, it has served an old dairy just to the east of this tract, and a horse farm that is further east at the end of where the 70th Street dead ends, who use semi-trucks on a regular basis through here, in fact, they're probably the biggest semi-truck user in that area, because the other businesses don't really use semis, although they're industrial in nature. So, we would respectively request that that requirement not be made at this application, although I am, I will say that I've been in conversation with Public Works as well as the property owners on both sides of that road for a distance to perhaps do an assessment district that would ultimately improve 70th Street. There's a desire to improve it, they just didn't, we just don't feel like the whole burden should be on the south side of the road in this case.
Commissioners, nobody signed up, any questions or comments for Mr. Johnson?
So are we eliminating a TE then about the street?
We would request that.
Two, we're eliminating TE2, is that it? I actually, oddly enough, drive up and down this street with some regularity, and I get what you're saying about that, about the uses and the distribution of them. This is one I think would I would be comfortable letting the marketplace, this is something you won't hear me say very often, take care of this issue, because I think at some point they will feel the need to improve the street and that probably an assessment district is the way to do that, and I'm willing to let that happen as it will. So I would move approval, deleting TE number two.
Second. Let's do approve of item 24's condition, deleting TE2, cast your votes. That's approved. Thank you, Tim.
Items 25 and 26 have been continued, item 27 is ABC 781, application by Jeff Rogers for an ABC 1 overlaying C3 Community Commercial at 3621 Northwestern Avenue and Ward 2.
Mr. Rogers? Applicant? Anybody representing the applicant? Okay.
I was sort of hoping that the applicant had given this up, and it kind of looks like maybe he has, can we just vote to deny it?
I think we'll give him to the heel of the docket, it's not generally our practice to deny these things, that of course, but to tell him or he's going to deny it.
We've given this guy a pretty strong indication that he was not going to get it approved, though.
It's true, you know, it is not our practice to deny without the applicant here, but how many times are we going to see this application in different form?
Well, I think we'll see it as long as 36 and that tract is not developed, I mean, I'm sure we will.
Well, I...
Don't you think? I mean, I think in the senior later, we'll probably see one across the street where the little strip is, when it redevelops.
Right.
It's just a matter of time.
But here's the question, and it is the question, no matter what's going to be there, if there's going to be a bar or a restaurant without liquor, or if it's going to be a dress shop, or if it's going to be a commercial thing, parking is going to be an issue, and the parking is going to be where the Boys and Girls Club is in Memorial Park.
Well, and I don't think that there's no use that can be made of this property, but I think any use, which includes the service of alcohol, is going to put too high a demand on what is very, very limited parking, period.
And I agree, and for that reason, I would move to deny this application without the applicant being here.
And I'll second it.
Okay, but then, when we come to 10, we'll approve it without the applicant being here, I'm just saying.
Okay, then we'll continue.
I just don't know how you want to deal with these, I don't disagree with your decision.
I honestly believe, and I could be wrong, but I think the fact that the applicant is not here today is an indication that they have...
Moved to continue for two weeks.
Well, no wait, but number 10's a new application.
Right, this one's a continued application.
Well, yeah, five times.
My, using number 10 as your example that you cited, I don't believe we've seen it six times over the last ten years.
I'll defer to the commission's vicious, I will remind you, though, of this at some future date.
Well, and we have denied these applications on this site time and time again, we have given this applicant a very, very strong indication that this application is not going to be approved, and I really don't have a problem moving to deny it, or seconding Bob's motion to deny it.
Bob moved to continue.
Nor did I, I mean, we don't have a mo, we haven't had a second.
I'll move to deny it.
Second.
Motion to deny item 27 and a second, cast your votes. Motion denied.
Item 28 has been withdrawn, item 29 is C6490, a final plat of Rockwell Park, Section 1 and Ward 8.
J. Spencer, Director.
You threw the short straw today, didn't you?
Apparently. What we've got here is final plat for the first section of Rockwell Park, we've got 24 acres, 70 lots, conforms to preliminary plat and to the zoning, staff has recommended approval, we're in agreement of all the TEs, and we request approval of this.
Commissioners, nobody signed up on this?
Move approval, second.
Motion second to approve item 8, cast your votes. That's approved.
Item 29. Excuse me. Item 30 is C6462, a final plat of Summer Hill Phase 2, Ward 1.
And so this is the application for final plat then of the second phase of Summer Hill, it's located in northeast corner of Mustang Road and Britton Road, contains 15 acres, 60 single-family lots, staff has recommended approval, we're in agreement with the TEs, and therefore we request approval of this application.
Commissioners, nobody signed up on item 30?
Luke, you're first.
Second. Motion second to approve item 30, cast your votes. That's approved.
Items 31 and 32 have been continued, item 33 is CE862, an application by Dustin or Rebecca Demery to close a 10-foot drainage easement at 15524 Doon Drive and Ward 1.
Was 32 continued?
Yes, it was.
Did I miss that?
It was late continuation.
It was a late add.
I did read it.
I think it got read earlier, but it was not on the original, but that's been continued. DW?
Commissioners, Director, DW, Congress, CSC, here to talk about this drainage easement. I would normally go along with maintaining a drainage easement, except the fact that this is in a private subdivision with private roads, public utilities. This drainage easement, because of the restricted covenants that have been redone in this addition, you now have to have two lots to build out there. The owner's here with me, I may ask him to come and speak in a minute, but bottom line is, this easement splits this lot in half. The road is called the Doon, because if you've ever been out there, it looks like a bunch of little dunes, it really is kind of a neat little ecostructure out there, it's got cactus and the whole nine yards, so, and it's got unlayed ground, and there's two contras that goes across it, and there's just no place to build except right where in the middle of this lot. So I'm asking you gentlemen to look at, Commissioners, sorry, Commissioner Powell, that you would look at getting rid of it, because number one, there's no reason for it to be there, the water doesn't go there, it doesn't act in that drainage capacity, it doesn't follow that area. I've got some 30 pictures I could show you, but I didn't want to bore you with the details, but bottom line is, the water doesn't go in that easement, it'll never go in that easement, it goes everywhere but that easement, it's basically sheet drains, it's a gravel road that doesn't have bargeages on it, and the water goes both sides of that lot. So I'm just asking you gentlemen to give me a favorable consideration to eliminate this easement, the city's never going to maintain this easement, there's no reason for us to have an easement, okay? And I'm just kind of using your intuition on this to go after this, I know Adair says he wants it, but if you had the easement, if the city of Oklahoma City had this easement tomorrow in another place, they're not going to do anything with it, it's just going to be a nuisance, I mean, if the guy called you up, if the owner called you up and said, "Hey, please come out here and clean this easement," you're not going to do it. The lake is right behind us, the water is going to get to the lake, because there's no way to stop it from getting to the lake, this is a low spot, building a pad is going to be some expense to move some dirt around to get it in there, so, I mean, I'm just asking you guys to go with me on, kind of an intuitive thing, that a 10-foot drainage easement in the middle of two lots doesn't make any sense.
Adair, would you like to speak on this matter, please?
Yeah, just to give you brief history, this plat was approved in 1964, there's only one house there, but whenever we approve any plat, we look at the full development of that subdivision, and what happens then. Today, you may not have that issue, but once these lots are developed, based on the subdivision requirement of 5.2.3, which says that you have to grade your lot either towards the street or to the back, at some point in future, when these lots are developed, you're going to have about six acres of drainage area coming to this point. So you need...
Can I, I'm sorry, can I stop you? You say coming to this point, you believe that the topography is such that it does drain to this point?
Yes, and I have...
I understood GW to say it does not.
It drains everywhere but, but through the middle of the lot, it doesn't drain through the middle of the lot with this drainage easement.
Agreed.
It drains, it, she drains, out there on this subdivision, there are no drainage structures, there's this road coming in here, the only reason there's a road there at all is because the present owner...
I don't care about the road.
Okay, but there's no, there's no bargeages, there's no ditches, it's just a bunch of gullies out there, and they call it the Doons, but the road's named appropriately, it's called the Doon because there's a bunch of little brown, little brown hills out there that look like dunes.
But you feel certain that once the property is developed, that's going to drain to this point?
I have a drainage map that I can share with you.
I'm going to take your word for it.
And...
Well, it will, water's going to get to the lake, which is right at the bottom, see where the hand is on the map up there?
Mm-hmm.
Water's going to get to that spot, because that's where the lake is. This is at a low spot, water is going to come to that spot, six acres is not very much.
Well, so are you proposing to drain it some other way, you just want to eliminate the easement?
It's well, I want to eliminate the easement and let the water do what it's been doing for years out there since 1964, and just go to a spot.
But I assume that the point of eliminating the easement is so you can build in this location?
We will, we will build in that location, and we will submit a site, site plan to whoever that you deem necessary to show that we're going to build it at elevation, because this is a study creek, or a study lake, and we have to have a finished floor elevation. So this lot will be elevated at the point that we put the house in, and everything else is going to fall away from it, because that's the way it works now.
Okay, I'm going over my head, I...
Okay.
Okay. Let me weigh in.
Okay. Want the picture?
Let's assume DW's right, we're going to get rid of this easement, we're going to fill those lots, put fill on it, and now the water's going to run away, or around, basically run around this, okay? The TE, Adair, asks for, you know, if we're going to do away with this easement, provide us another one. So my question would be, if Adair's going to, or DW's going to fill this, and water's going to run around it, Adair, where do you want your other easement?
Well, that's what I asked him, I called him and I wanted to find out what's his alternative plan, and he doesn't have one, so, so that's the problem I have, is that, you know, we tried to work with him, wanting to know what's the alternative, and I don't have one, so that's what concerns me, because the first person who's going to be flooded once these lots are built up is Mr., I forgot the name of the applicant, but his client is going to go, you know, suffer the first problem right there.
Well, then let me weigh in for a second, then isn't the answer then, if DW can't come up with something right now to satisfy you, if you're going to develop these lots, then some condition about when these lots are developed, then at that point, you'll designate where the drainage will go off on whatever the house is that you're building there, at that time, you'll do the more engineering and figure out to satisfy the city where that drainage easement's going to go.
But it needs to happen now, because he wants to eliminate what should be there for the rest of the subdivision.
Okay, what I'm hearing is it goes this way, it doesn't go that way, no, Bob, no, it goes through this, because it's natural, what he's proposing is, once this easement is closed, to add fill, well, when you build it up higher, then the water flow's going to go around that.
Well, but at that point in time, do a drainage easement on both sides, well...
We don't have anywhere for requiring back then, you know, it's one of those things that we have to do it right now.
This is, this is... We're not going to do this yet, that's why you need to provide us with the knowledge.
Well, here's where the water goes, if I could use this little red dot right here, water goes down this way.
There are about four points in that lot, actually.
There's, yeah, there's actually about four points, but it's been regraded, so this area right here has been regraded. I can show you, I've got pictures to show if you want to see them, but this area right here kind of goes over like this, and it kind of goes like this, and then there's drainage easement that comes out of here, that's not, it's not graded.
There's no easement there.
Actually, there's easement right here.
Well...
But here's what I would like to do then, if you want, if you want an easement, and we can do this today, I will specify, if my client will agree, that we'll put the easement where it really should be, which would be right along this west line, we'll give you, we will give a 10-foot easement along that line.
Can you say it needs an easement there?
I think it does, that's, that's the biggest gully right here.
This isn't ready, you're not going to get it passed today, DW, because guaranteed there's two or three of us, there's only six people sitting here.
All right.
So you're going to have to come back, figure out where you're going to put your easement, because you're going to have to put one in.
Okay, all right.
And meet with Adair and work that out, okay?
Yes, and that's why I called him.
How many, how many...
No, I'm just...
Is September 12th fine?
Pardon?
September 12th?
It'd be fine, it'd be fine.
Can I get a motion?
Go move.
Motion second to continue this item to September 12th, cast your votes. Thank you.
Item 34 is ABC 790, an application by Resvan Betts for an ABC 2 at 3608 North May Avenue, Ward 2.
Afternoon, my name is Mike Betts with the law firm Lidl Slay Curly, 119 North Robinson Suite 1200, I'm here for the applicant, what we have here is a sit-down restaurant that is wanting to serve beer, wine, and mixed beverages, the restaurant is currently located in a small retail strip mall, and we just request that the overlay be granted.
Nobody here to speak on this one, Commissioners?
I'm going to move approval. I'm going to move approval.
Motion to second to approve item number 34. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Thank you. Might be excused?
Yes.
Thank you.
35 is SP 460, an application by the Salvation Army for a special permit to operate an emergency shelter and feeding site in I-2 Modern Industrial at 2100 Northwest 10th Street, Ward 6.
Yes, my name is Todd Edmonds. I'm a principal with HSE Architects. I'm here representing the salvation of central Oklahoma today. We are requesting a special application to allow for emergency shelter and feeding site. We agree to do all of the things that are in the staff report. However, we would like to clarify on item number five. It mentions that the exterior walls of the building are to be 70% brick veneer, rock, or stone, and we are currently proposing for the majority of the building to be coated concrete tilt-up with some stone accents and some wood and metal trim. And we would like to include concrete, coated concrete tilt-up in this requirement for exterior veneer.
Commissioners, Mr. Edmonds, there are several people signed up.
Well, I'll wait. Actually, I do have a question.
Okay.
And it has to do, I think, with what is going to be disclosed by the people that are protesting. That the, that the shelter and the feeding activities of the facility, could those be located on the southern end of your, of the new building? In other words, there is a concentration of facilities that care for impoverished people, homeless, police, you know, those kind of things within this area and it is concentrated. And my understanding of what's going on in the area is lots of problems that aren't related to Salvation Army and, and don't get me wrong, I support this facility. I think it's a great place, great addition to the neighborhood, and I think the Salvation Army does a marvelous job. But to move the feeding and the sheltering activities to the south, away from the neighborhood to the north on, on 10th and Barnes and those, those areas in there, would, would do well to probably alleviate some of the problems that you're going to hear about within the neighborhood. And it's not caused by the Salvation Army, but it's caused by other programs that either are doing it without zoning or illegally or not doing what they should do. So, the question is, can you have administrative offices to the north and the, the emergency shelter and, and whatever the else you have to the south?
Certainly. And, and that's, that's, that's exactly how we currently have it designed.
Perfect.
The chapel and the administrative services are all on the north end. When you come in, the main entrance that faces to the east, that is an entrance into the cafeteria area where the meals will be served and then all of the emergency shelter is to the south.
It's to the south. That's...
And that main entrance is recessed back off of the street.
Yeah.
So, it is shielded and we have a large waiting area there for the clients to wait while they're waiting for their meals and to be seen.
As I said, I'm, I'm in full support of what it is you're doing there with that spot that has been in need of a lot of help for a long time. So, I, I support it. But I think now you need to listen to the folks who've signed up.
Um, yeah, I, I mean, one concern I have, this is a pretty substantial undertaking, just for me, is why we have a somewhat limited view...
Right.
Of what's going to be there for, I, I, Mr. Edmonds, how big is your building?
We do have some other graphics. We have some renderings and we have some boards that might, might better explain what we're doing. The Salvation Army is being relocated from its current location south of I-40.
Right.
To allow for the quarter shore park. The new facility will be, will house all of those facilities in one single-story building that will be 50,000 square feet in size. It will have administrative offices, chapel, warehouse, the cafeteria that we're applying for the feeding site, and then also emergency shelter. All of the exterior walls of the building will be a coated concrete tilt-up that I mentioned.
Right.
It's hard to see this, but we also have it included up there. As you can see, this, this is all concrete tilt-up exterior. The main entrance is in the center and then chapel and administration is on the north end with the residential area to the south.
Right. You folks can sit down and we'll call you up.
Okay.
When, when, to speak. You can just sit right there on the front row.
Before they go anywhere, have you seen any of this before?
Yeah, we have seen, you know, some of the plans that, you know, are being...
You can just sit right there on the front row. We'll call, you don't have to stand up during the whole presentation if you don't. Have a seat right there on the front row by Lance.
Just sit right here.
Yeah, that's fine.
And before, before we go too much further, is, would it be possible to push the whole facility south on the site?
The, the site is currently a total of 26 acres and we're developing the northeast corner, which is about six acres. The remainder of the property is being held for future development, possibly extended living units and other services that the Salvation Army intends to provide in the future.
This, if I may, the, but the Salvation Army owns the whole tract?
Yes.
All of the property?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Now, while he's bringing that up, let me ask another unrelated question. This site has been used for numerous things over the years, but lately, it had, there's been some ABC overlays granted here.
Right.
I'm assuming the Salvation Army isn't interested in ABC overlays and you wouldn't...
Really?
I don't know what those...
I'm not sure I, I understand what that is.
Alcohol beverage licenses?
Yeah.
Seems to be similar outside your mission.
Well, my, my point is they're here and in all my years on the commission, I've never seen one go away.
No, I agree.
Because they run with the land. But Russell, I'll ask, Dane's not here. Can we amend this BUD for them to go away? They currently permitted it? Is that permitted?
I recall there's two permitted out because we did that with the part of the A of the spectator.
This is a special permit. So, there's, you can't amend that. Since the ABCs are zoning, the only way to make them go away is to re...
This is just a permit. I'm sorry. I thought we were...
But, but don't the ABC designation, doesn't it go away if the building is abandoned?
No.
No, no.
No, your state license.
Well, you've had that before.
Well, you're, you're thinking of the, well, maybe you're right when they're filming down for six months.
Six months. That's if it's non-conforming and doesn't have an ABC.
Yeah, these are by right. These run...
These are zoned ABC, but...
Oh, they do.
These were small, snack bar areas within the large AMC building.
That's correct.
So, right now, any ABC would have to meet that exact footprint. So...
I'm just seeing an opportunity to make it go away, but it's a special permit and we can't.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Okay?
So, the question I guess I have, I'm sorry, about, about the special permit, the fact that this is this huge site and what we're talking about doing with it is only about a quarter of the site.
Right.
Because this is a special permit process, this is what we're permitting. If they want to enlarge the facility or they want to add additional housing or whatever, that'll have to come back to us. Is that right? Yes? Okay.
Right. Um, do you have anything else you'd like to specifically address to us right now, Mr. Edmonds? Are there some others to speak?
Well, just, just maybe to reiterate, reiterate your point about the north end and being...
Please.
That, that, that faces the residential.
Right.
This, this whole side here is all the administration and there's a chapel on the corner.
Mm-hmm.
That will be in the rendering. It's, it will be very nice facing the, the residential area. It has a lot of glass. It has wood timbers. It has stone veneer accents on it. And then also the entrance on that north-facing side as well.
So, can you tell me, just for my, the picture that you're holding up there, what is its orientation, if, if you could?
This elevation right here faces Penn.
Okay.
10th Street is right here.
Okay, thank you. All right, I got it.
Okay. Does that help?
Mm-hmm, very much. I appreciate that. So, the, the, what we would call the frontage will be a face Penn versus 10th Street.
That's correct.
Right. And so, what's the setback on the, it may have listed here. Do you know what the setback is on the 10th Street side? Just out of curiosity. Approximately?
Sixty, so 180 feet maybe.
180?
Yes, sir. It's quite a distance. This is all grass and lay vegetation.
Yeah.
Between our parking lot and 10th Street.
Okay, all right. Well, it'll certainly improve the appearance of that particular lot. All right. Anything else you'd like to add right now? We have some, like I said, some people signed up and so...
No, sir. I'm, I'm finished.
Okay. We'll hear from Mr. Estrada.
Yes, uh, city council, I have my mother right here.
Odile Estrada.
And my aunt.
Ana Maria Segura, vivo in Northwest 10th Street.
Okay, she's been living there for, they, they've both been living there for 22 years and with the proposed installations, we feel like there is a direct impact to, to the residents. Lately, we have seen an increase of homeless people. We believe some of them have been untreated, with untreated mental disorders. Some of them carry dangerous animals, pit bulls just running around. I feel for the safety of my daughter when they go visit grandma. So, we, we feel for, we, we think that, you know, it needs to be at least considered. We are opposing for these installations to be as close to the resident areas. A lot of the residents there don't speak English and that's the reason you, you guys don't see an uproar here. But I, I do see some, some neighbors that have come here and they can express their opinions as well.
And sir, could, can you tell us exactly where they live? I, I didn't catch.
Yes, she lives on 2135 Northwest 10th Street.
Okay, on the, on the north side of 10th?
Yes, on the north side.
Just west?
And, and she lives on 2209 Northwest 10th.
And she's in 20...
Yes, yes.
2,0210 block of 10th.
Yes. And my aunt, she has expressed her opposition publicly and she has already received threats from homeless people that live, or I guess they have some made-up tents on Northwest 11th. So, we just feel that the activity is just going to decrease in the safety of the overall neighborhood due to drugs and the, as I said before, untreated mental disorders that these people exhibit.
Sir?
Thank you.
Is there an organization that is particularly not taken care of their clients? That there, is there an organization in your neighborhood that is a focus of the problems that you're having? It's not Salvation Army, but is there another group or church or organization that you have specific problems with?
Uh, not that I know of. All I know is that homeless people used to live under bridges in breakdown, in that area, downtown area. And now, you know, hundreds of them are going to be moving to the north area, you know, basically just decreasing value of our properties, which we have worked so hard for so many years. My parents and my aunts, they're getting really old. You know, they cannot, it's not like they can move away from their neighborhood. And it's just, it's just going to become a worse situation as, as time goes on and as the facilities start to be developed.
Okay, thank you.
Miss, okay, that was Mrs. Estrada and Miss Segura, correct?
That's right, yes.
Thank you. Did they have anything else to add?
She, she just wants to say that like on Western Street, it's, it's on the, on Western Street, it's, it's just a living example of what Northwest 10th is going to become if we allow, you know, the homeless people just to roam around, you know, especially untreated medical disorders and dangerous animals with them. We have a lot of children and a lot of, you know, it's, it's a nice neighborhood and we are really concerned about what's going to become of, you know, as if this is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Blackburn, would you come forward, please, ma'am?
Good afternoon. My name is Marilyn Blackburn. I live at 1101 North Barnes, which is directly across the street from this proposed site. Our concern is, this is what we received. We don't know what portion of this proposed site is going to be housing. We weren't told what emergency shelter was or feeding sites. I have expressed a desire that if they move it down to the south, down where their other facilities are now, it would shelter us a little bit. Right now, this is my best friend in my neighborhood. It's pepper spray. I have lived at that address for 34 years. I have paid my house off, made improvements, have great neighbors, all except for one. We're getting a little overwhelmed. Right now, within a two-mile area, we have the Jesus House, which is well-run. We have several Salvation Army facilities and I was glad to see they were coming in. We have the City Rescue Mission. We have a new facility and an old school in the 1700 block of Northwest 10th that's called Christ Cross Mission, same type of situation. Of course, we have the Police Detox Building and the old gun armory thing there at Virginia.
Right.
And our main problem is we have seen no plans. And I, I feel like Salvation Army will be a good addition if they would move that to the south. Our problem is specific with one operation. About 15 years ago, the Church of the Nazarene at 1121 North Penn opened kind of a feeding site and a meeting place and they have prayer meetings and things. They're called OKC Compassion. Beautiful website, absolutely beautiful website. It's all lies. The church on July 1st, for some reason, locked the doors. They took the sign for OKC Compassion off the church, moved it around the corner to a residence. I did find out that that particular residence is zoned commercial. So, there wasn't anything, but there's six or eight people living in there. They now post on their website that they have housing for 42 people. They have taken over the 2100 block of West Park. There are fights. One man got mad at his girlfriend, took a baseball bat to cars all over the neighborhood. Two houses have been broken into and burned. My neighbor to the west of me was burglarized. I've put bars on the back of my house and on my back door. Like I said, I carry pepper spray. I have talked to them. They do nothing. They all have large dogs. There's a big, they're all crackheads, basically. They fight in the streets. Police were out yesterday and arrested a couple of them right out of the main house that they're using for their meeting place. We now have people sleeping in cars in the church parking lot. They have brought in two motor homes. They're running lines into the houses. How many more house fires are we going to have? They're right behind Hannah. I feel sorry for her. She's really got them. She's really got them. They now have no facilities for feeding, so they put picnic tables out in the yard. These people need help, but I don't think, they're licensed as a nonprofit. But I have never seen anything on their, that has transpired that they have on their website. All the Christmas parties, the block parties, the counseling, all that. They have a prayer meeting nine o'clock in the morning. Then they're loose in the neighborhood twenty-four hours a day. I have been approached when I'm doing yard work. I am retired, I've been there half my life. I don't want to move. I cannot now get out of my house what I have in it. With the idea of having a good place to live, when I retired three years ago, I put another twenty thousand dollars in my house. I now cannot sell without taking a loss, if I can sell at all. I'm also a little isolated because the majority of my neighbors speak Spanish. I speak a little, they speak a little English, we go along great. This is not any kind of a racial issue at all. Hannah's been my neighbor for, I've watched her son grow up. He's married, has a daughter getting ready to celebrate her quinceañera, which is her fifteenth birthday. We're just concerned about our neighborhood, and I, and it's not the Salvation Army. I think they are wonderful. And if they will, I mean, we hadn't seen any of these plans, so we didn't know that they even considered putting the housing on the south end. And we don't know, how many people do you plan to house? Is it long-term? Is it a short-term thing? We've had no information.
To address that specifically, there's, there will be space for a hundred and three beds in this facility. It will consist of men, women, and families, women with children. I think, how many are longer stay? Jeff?
Before we go further, I mean, I, your facility looks wonderful. I mean, I don't think there's really particular concern about the, about the building, the structure, et cetera. What my concern is, as I, as I listen to this, is, quite frankly, I'm unimpressed with your community-building activities with respect to what your programs are, what you're doing, how you're doing it, and your outreach within the neighborhood. It's, it's, and I know there's a Salvation Army center not far from where this proposed structure is, but this is kind of moving to a different area where there is a viable residential neighborhood right there. And what we're being asked for is a significant portion of our special exception or application is the programs. And so, and you've done a nice job of explaining them in your application, but I'm a little concerned that the neighborhood has not been brought into the discussion in inadequate fashion to kind of educate them about what we're trying to do and exactly what's, what we hope to achieve here. That's, that's my concern.
Can I say something? I simply inquired as to what, when the sign went up and it said Chesapeake and the Salvation Army, we were all going hallelujah. We figured there would be no nonsense and that it would be, I was told that it would be office and distribution space. Then almost a year later, we get this request for variance with this, no explanation as to how many people would be housed or where it would be or what, you know, we don't know what the facility is. And that's why I, I signed up. And I do appreciate your time. It's just very frustrating to be in a situation where, you know...
I appreciate you coming down. Commissioner Gass?
I too agree with Chairman's comment. It would sure be nice if you guys would, would get with the community and explain to them what you're doing. I like your facility. I, I think the proposal is great. I can make an argument, there are obviously some problems in this neighborhood that have been, been pointed out. They're not caused by you guys, okay? You're not even there yet. I could make the argument that once you are there, you may actually help resolve some of those problems, okay?
That's what we hope.
And add to the neighborhood. But again, going back to what Chairman said, these folks, they're there already. They have a right to, to be informed and not be concerned. They may turn into your biggest cheerleader if you just communicate with them. You know, I'd make that observation. The other observation I would make is we are, at this point, a skeleton planning commission at best.
Yeah, we are.
And I was wondering if you would like to maybe take a continuance, talk, set up something with the neighborhood, explain the programs as suggested by the chairman. Doesn't matter to me.
I, I think that's really not a bad idea. I mean, Commissioner Bright, what are you, what's your view on this?
Well, yeah, maybe, I agree with both of these guys. And again, don't get me wrong, I support the facility. I think what you're doing is a, it's a great addition. But listening to Ms. Blackburn, there's two issues that come to mind. One is, is that if there is an organization running amok in your neighborhood, have you complained to the city about zoning violations?
I contacted my councilperson and...
Have you gotten any response?
Responded to.
Is there something that could be done, maybe to get some response? I just throw that out there and hope that somebody does something because...
Well, when, when we had the successor to AMC over there, I was working for the state and the Attorney General's Office, we had so many problems with unlicensed bars...
Right, but that's gone though.
Radios and all that. And so I had some outlets to go to. Right now, I'm frustrated. I don't know who to talk to.
Well, maybe JJ or somebody, could you get with Ms. Blackburn and guide her about, you know, there's one organization that has picnic tables out there on vacant lots to feed people, that sounds really, really not right.
It's a nightmare. They won't control their dogs.
You know, there's something not right going on. But the second issue is, is that it may be, as Nick said, the Salvation Army facility, meeting with the neighbors, you may be able to coordinate something that makes your facility more secure. I mean, you know, these people are running amok to the north of you, so maybe get with the neighbors and just say, this is what we're going to do, and you might be having a joint effort.
We just, we need help.
I, I know several people that live in your neighborhood, a couple of artists that are really great, and, I mean, they really are good. And there's no reason to have a neighborhood like that to be deteriorated to the point where you can't walk out of your house, you know? So would you, a couple of weeks' continuance to get with the neighbors or...
Yes. I'm James Pickle, Eighty-Four Twenty Northeastern, and serve as the contractor for the project. I just want everybody to know, especially the neighbors, the only reason there hasn't been any discussion is because there were never any protests. Nothing was ever filed. We check with JJ frequently. We know that they are notified as part of the protest, as part of the process, but when there were no protests, we just thought everything was fine. We too think that if we can get with the neighbors, show them what we're doing, the services that we're going to be offering, that everybody will agree, this is going to be an improvement for the neighborhood. We already have a place just across the street where we're going to be locating that houses the same type of people that we're going to put in this facility. We do agree to a continuance.
First meeting in September?
We'll be happy to do that.
September twelfth?
Two languages.
Two languages.
You've got Spanish and...
Yeah, please, and Spanish.
And they do, that's...
Hablo español un poquito.
See, okay. I think that'd be good, if you could just outline your part of, and I agree...
We're happy to do that.
And apologies if I sounded a little harsh about your outreach, that was unfortunate, I didn't...
No, we fully understand, and we're, in a way, we're glad because we are going to be neighbors and we want them to welcome us to the neighborhood.
Actually, all we saw was a sign going up. We didn't even get any notice of what we were doing initially.
James, if you could get with the people who've come, we've got their addresses and maybe some phone number information if you'd like, and that might help.
We'll be happy to do that.
I wonder, I wonder if there's any problem with the detox center that we just opened up about two or three blocks down the road? You know, when, when we looked at that, our police department said that there would be no releases from that. They would be driven away from it and would not be just a walk-off. I'm just wondering if, if something has happened there that has caused us a problem.
But they're drug addicts.
Is this the one on Pershing Boulevard?
Yes, down on Linwood.
North Care?
Yeah.
No, 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 no.
We're talking about the detox on Linwood and...
Sell MasterCard.
I know where you are.
That little corner there.
It used to be the, the old South West Shooters place.
We just finished construction of the North Care facility on General Pershing Boulevard, and there was a tent camp there that I think has all been removed.
I believe that's dispersed now.
It is. And I think those people are just wandering around, and we know that some of them will probably wind up in our facility.
That's the point.
We hope, because we think we can rehabilitate those people.
Anyway, get with JJ, I meant, about the zoning and...
Thank you so much. We have been just so frustrated.
And then meet with the neighbors. And so I move that this be continued two weeks?
No, till September twelve.
September twelfth. September, oh, September twelfth.
They'll give us thirty days.
Yeah, well, we only have one meeting in August, so that's our first meeting in September.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That's continued. Thank you all.
Item thirty-six is SPD seven twenty-five, an application by Yaseen Atui to rezone Two-Hundred North McCormick from I-three Heavy Industrial to SPD seven twenty-five in Ward Three.
Good afternoon. My name is William O'Brien. I'm the attorneys. I'm with, here with my clients, Mr. Yaseen and Adam Atui. First of all, we'd like to thank the staff for the cooperation they gave to us during this project. I've made themselves available for meetings on numerous occasions and for phone calls. And we, Yaseen and Adam wished to open a motor vehicle recycling program that will minimize the environmental pollution by ensuring that the waste from the vehicles is recycled and does not flow into the earth. As you know, the property that they selected is, been zoned by the, by this board and the commission as being I-three Heavy Industrial District, and we're available if you, the board has any questions. Thank you.
Well, I do have some questions, sir. You have pictures that I see indoor storage where there's racks of auto parts, and I see one of transmissions and things like that. My, my question to you is, what's the, what's outside? You know, this is a catchy name, automobile recycling, but I also envision basically a junkyard. Can you tell us what it's going to look like, outside?
Sure, my client will... Hi, my name is Yaseen. I just have quick introduction of my future project. Anyway, recycling facility provide valuable service that contributes to our environmental quality of life through the recycling of auto parts and scrap metals and conservation of natural resources. This program is designated to prevent pollution by implementing best management practices, which is BNP, in the industry by minimizing the generation of the release of waste and increasing, increasing the competitive advantage and improving the efficiency of the business operation. BNP are used to reduce waste through bare work practices, material storage, and other process management techniques. Concerning your question on the back lot, we're going to have a storage, which is, I have a picture on the back, it's bare, it's bare metal, we storage at the back. Later on, we send it to the scrapyard, we load it on the rollback, and we send it to scrap, scrapyard to get crushed and recycled from there.
The pictures that we have been provided, those cars in various stages of disrepair or disassembly, and they're all nice and lined up and evenly spaced and all that. As you get more cars and you run out of space, what's going to happen?
Usually we don't run out of space because we try to recycle the cars quick. As soon as we need what we need from them, we have to sell, the rest goes to the crash and gets recycled. It goes all the way from here to Dallas. Dallas is the biggest recyclers, twenty-four-seven oven, where they shred the metal and they recycle plastic metal and all that stuff. But we never run out of space because whatever it's extravening, we can stay weak and we have to send it or crush it and get it out of there. It wouldn't be a junkyard in a conventional sense, oh, sorry. It wouldn't be a junkyard in a conventional sense. This is everything.
Well, I'm not worried about terminology in a conventional sense. I'm worried about basically what it's going to look like. And, you know, we have, we have problems with junkyards, salvage yards, recycling places. You know, you pick a term, and I'm, I'm trying to figure out what, what this is going to look like. I, I like the indoor part of it, but I'm not certain I can support the outdoor part.
Mr. Gass, just a couple of years ago, a big company came here to Oklahoma City, the name is LKQ. It's not far away from that location, it's around two miles or maybe less, but even on I-two. And they're even serve service, and I visited the area lately, and there is, I mean, serve services people, they can open a pot or something, and there is oil drain on the floor, on the, on the, on the soil. Our business is completely different. I mean, nobody touch any car, everything is in the house. We dismantle, we touch, we recycle. The front office is just for retail. Everything we do is in the house, so it's pretty safe as I see it. It's, it's safe for the environment. And our property is all fenced by eight-feet fence, size-proof fence, which is, nobody does see the inside. And, and we are not like fully like heavy, heavy business. We are involved in the car sales too, which is my front, the front of the business is a car sales business. So we are kind of like not the heavy industry, we're kind of like a little bit light, so...
Have you had any discussions with Commissioner Irwin on this?
I don't believe so. I'm sorry, what's your question again?
The planning, Commissioner Ward Three, Commissioner Irwin, who's not here today, have you had any discussions with him?
No, sir. No.
Thank you.
Chairman, my, my observation about what the facility is, is that this is almost all I-three, and this is heavy, major...
Mr. Gass, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
...industrial uses. And, and at least I have in front of me a plan that, that this facility is going to recycle, it's going to take care of all the toxic wastes, the commodities, automobiles, unlike, you know, if, if you wanted to put a junkyard there, you wouldn't be here. You know, you could just put a big old junkyard and let things, you know, percolate through the ground. And so for that reason, I think that if you adhere to what it is that you've shown us, your plan of operation, and then what you're going to do with the, with the waste materials and the recycling and everything else, and there is going to be above-ground storage of cars, et cetera, but if you say that this is recycled, that you take cars in and you, you know, you dispose of the, of the byproducts, I don't see any reason to disapprove this application, and therefore I move approval.
I haven't looked at this, known this area well, because I have kids that play indoor soccer.
Oh.
And so, well, yeah, I, I think that's the one thing that's interesting about this, is that's the one building that's really out of place. On the south side of that is a Deleese, not with it, not a batch plant, but where they sell dry goods and stuff like that. There's engine manufacturing on the southwest corner of Fourth and McCormick, there's this, I mean, I, I cut through on Fourth Street to get from, coming from the north to get to ISA. And so, you know, this is really a, truly a heavy industrial area, and I know you're not, I mean, you're probably familiar with it. There's indoor recycling that's just on the north side of this, and so, I mean, the biggest concern I have is that I kind of, I'm leaning towards what Nick said, is that when I go to take my kids to ISA, I don't want to see a bunch... that when I go to take my kids to ISA, I don't wanna see a bunch of cars stacked on the north side. And so I'm a little concerned with, with what's gonna go, go on, because based on this graphic that I have, there's a fairly small structure, there's a car lot, and I know that there's an eight-foot fence and reading where the sign, I mean, you know, reading where they're gonna put site proof fencing around the vehicle processing area and vehicle storage area, and some of this is gonna have chain link fence. I mean, I have some concerns. I'm not sure I'm 100% on this, but as far as the, as far as what it, the process, what they are actually doing, I support. I think it's an appropriate location. So that's the side of me that, you know, says I would probably second that motion of approval.
One, one thing we need to consider too, uh, the one at 59th and High, probably, well, it's actually Interstate 35 and 59th Street. If you recall, that was gonna be one of the premier recycling plants. We've had more trouble with that piece of property than any piece of property that I've ever been on, uh, involved with on, on the planning commission. And, you know, chopping up cars and cars stacked, uh, 30, 40 foot high, and I'm not, that's not exaggerating, and you can't cover it up on an eight-foot fence. Uh, I have concerns with this kinda operation also, because I know, uh, our, our councilman, Pete White and myself have dealt with that thing until we've almost blew in the face. And we still have a problem. Traffic problem for one thing. Uh, and, yeah, and I know, you know, even the neighbors down there, that's an industrial area as well, but even the neighbors down there are, you know, they complain. I bet, I bet the city, I don't know exactly if we could find that out, but I bet the city gets at least two or three complaints a day on that, the traffic and so, and so forth in that, uh, facility down there.
Just a, um, there is somebody, Mr. Downey, are you still here?
Yes.
Sorry, sir. We'd like to hear from you. I, I, I get the sense that we're probably leaning toward continuing this, but I'm happy to hear from you if you can't come back, because I don't think, Mr. O'Brien, I don't think you're gonna, I don't think you can count to five here today.
Um, Mr. O'Brien, me, myself, I play soccer in that area. I play soccer there. Um, uh, the soccer owners, they're in support of that. The reason is we're gonna have a good landscaping on the front. It's better to have good landscaping on the front and a side better than to have another heavy industrial manufacturing. Maybe waste management can expand there, which is there in front of that property. And their trucks, they drive every day, every morning there, so they have a maintenance. On the, on the north side, there is like recycling 24, maybe seven machine, I'm not sure, they recycle plastic and, and, uh, other materials. I'm not sure, I didn't go inside. Uh, on the north side of property, there is bad line of recycling, which is they recycle cardboard, so it's all heavy recycling area, and my business is just a pure recycling, which is cleaning. I mean, we're gonna have a nice property clean. It's better to have some landscaping down there than, uh, having another, another 20 or 30, uh, building, uh, I mean, big building coming there just in front soccer and soccer. I mean, uh, I have, um, I have good relationships so far, good communication with them, and, um, they, uh, of course, they are, they looks at my plan and they agreed on my plan and they, they're in support of it, and, uh, I do have here Caitlin Dempsey. She's here today in support of the owners, so.
Mr. Downey, I'd like to hear from Mr. Downey right now. Would you like to--
Yes, my name's Jeff Downey. I'm with Chickshaw Telecom at 5 North McCormick.
Okay.
We operate our headquarters there, our corporate headquarters. And the concern that we have is, it's a fine business plan, you know, and it's obviously a good business. The concern we have is the, the additional traffic it might bring to McCormick, which we already have traffic issues getting up and down that street because of the flooding that occurs in that area. Um, I don't know if you guys are aware of that or not, and they're, they're working on it, but it looks like it's still gonna be a few years before that's finally fixed. Uh, it doesn't take any rain at all to close Fourth Street so that you can't, you can't use McCormick, you can't exit to the north. So all the traffic has to come south onto Reno, to get to Reno, to get to West Reno. Uh, West Reno has become a main artery because of the complex that they've built, um, at the corner of MacArthur and Reno with all the, uh, I can't remember the name of the development, but with all the stores and the--
Mm-hmm.
--restaurants and so forth. That traffic backs up, uh, and stays backed up all day long from, from MacArthur, almost back to Meridian. So it makes it extremely difficult to get in and out of, off of McCormick.
Right.
Uh, so the concern I have is, and it was more of a question, was how, how much increased traffic and how, how would, how would the product be brought in to the facility?
As far as I calculated, this much. Um, I, so I spoke with the engineer, uh, the one handling, uh, contracts with the city on the Fourth Street, they are building a new sewer pump or something. I spoke with him. His name is Scott Barrett. Uh, he's handling the project. Uh, right now they are closing streets, but he told me their next few months they're gonna finish the project. And again, the Fourth Street will be, you can exit on Arbor, you can exit on MacArthur, and you can exit on Reno, so we have three directions we can drive. Uh, we don't have that much traffic. We just only have a delivery truck, one in the, in the morning and one in the afternoon, and, uh, we were, we were talking about trucks, just a small pickup truck. Uh, the rest might be my FedEx truck in the morning or, or UPS truck in the morning. You know, they come, pickup boxes and stuff like that, but there was, there is no semis or anything big. The only biggest thing we have is gonna be a rollback truck, and that's about it, so.
Okay, so--
It's not like a junkyard where people show up to buy stuff.
We try to ship more, we try to sell online more and ship more online.
Well, when you get there, isn't there a certain point that you have, that there's a part of the vehicle left that has to be put on some truck and hauled off to somebody? Or does it all just disappear into the ether right there at your side? I'm guessing somewhere, some parts get hauled off on big trucks.
No, you told us--
One time a day?
I told us before that they, you know, send the recycler to be crushed.
Is there any rail facility? There's a railroad track here. I mean, do you use, is there a train that runs, that you could take advantage of, like loading up on a boxcar, a train?
I'm sorry, a train? No, 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 that's-- No, we're--
There's a railroad track?
No, that's inactive railroad.
That doesn't work?
No. No. Yeah, I believe it does belong to the state, it's inactive, yeah.
Um, okay.
May I ask a question?
Um, she came a little bit late and she didn't fill up, but I was fixing to fill up on her.
Sure.
Thank you.
State your name, please.
My name is Caitlin Dempsey, and I represent the owner of the property. And the owner of the property is actually the neighbor of the soccer facility, and part of selling the property was that I had to find somebody that was gonna be a good neighbor to them. Much harder said than done when it's an I-3 zoning, because a lot of people that came in and wanted to do heavy manufacturing, they were not okay with. So when Yassin approached us, we had meetings with, we had conference calls with, with people nationally, and we had sit-down meetings with the local manager and explained to her and got a comfort level that in our contract, all the construction had to be approved of that, the final building plan has to be approved by the neighbors so that they're comfortable, because, as he mentioned, they have people, a lot of people coming in and out of an industrial area that wouldn't normally be in that location, and so they want them to feel comfortable with the neighbors, because they're going, they have, their clients come between about 5:00 PM and midnight. So it's an empty industrial neighborhood, which isn't typically thought to be a very safe area in the evening, and so they wanted to make sure they had that comfort level, and so they met with Yassin, feel, feel comfortable moving forward, and he's been really great about working with them to, to do, to modify, to make it where they feel okay, that it's not gonna be a junkyard and that they're not gonna be able to see over the fence and the landscaping, look nice when they have their clients come park in front of it. So, uh, I'm supposed to be here today to represent Mike Garrett. He is out of Michigan, and he is in full support, so, um, that's just the ownership's take on everything.
Okay, thank you. Um, to Mr.--
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention something else. Um, our operation only closes at 5:00 or maybe 4:30. Um, when I was talking to the owners, um, I play soccer myself there and I play other locations. Um, the most busiest time during the day is empty. The parking lot, if you drive around, is empty. They only start after like 5:00, from 5:00 to midnight, from 5:00 to 2:00 in the morning, uh, also Saturday and Sunday. That's main where the main businesses work, and the rest is just empty parking lot. You cannot even see one single car there during the day. It's just like an afternoon, late night evening business.
All right. Well, here's, here's my comment, is that this is all I-3.
I agree.
Every single thing that's here is I-3, and, and that's the most, you know, the most you could do with a piece of property in this city. And other than this incongruous indoor soccer facility there, uh, I don't see any reason why this facility isn't exactly where it should be.
You got a motion in the second, don't you, Mr. Chairman?
My motion stays.
Okay.
And, and you--
Did you have a second?
Second?
I'm, I'll second it.
All right. Sure. Cash your votes. One, two, three, four, okay.
I am voting against this, not because I believe it may or may not be a, a bad--
That's what I thought.
--land use.
Four.
I believe that we need more information, and this gentleman has made a lot of representations. This, this document does not reflect those representations. There's been no communication with the Ward 3 Plan Commissioner, and by doing, voting the way I have, obviously this is gonna be continued to the next time.
Right.
During that time, I would urge you to get some more information, more of those representations you've put in here. You've put all your policies, and I understand that, but, and, and discuss this with Commissioner Irwin, and, and come back to us in September.
Oh, so mainly, Mr. Gales, as far as I understood right now, you suggested that I make an appointment with Mr. Irwin and talk to him in detail about the project, right? Okay.
Um, it's automatically continued because there's not a, there's a lack of, you can't get to five, so we'll continue it to September 12th.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Gales.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, items 37 and 38 have been continued. Item 39 is C-6501. This is a final plat of Oak Hollow Industrial Park Phase 2 in Ward 4.
Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates again. Um, we have reviewed the staff report and agree with all the technical evaluations. Request your approval--
Mr. Gales, nobody signed up on 39. Make a motion to approve. Thank you. Wait a minute, I would note for the record, though, that this was part of Banish's subdivision, which was approved, recorded in 1908, and Commissioner Gales voted in favor of it in 1908.
I--
And once again, votes in favor of approval.
Do we have another, uh, street called Oak Hollow? Is that the reason why that street can't be--
Yeah, apparently we're gonna change the name. Thank you.
Items 48 and 41 have been continued. Gives us to item 42, which is C-6506, final plat of Fountain Grass Edition, Section 7, Ward 3.
Good afternoon. Chris Anderson again with SMC Engineering representing the developers of this project. Have read the staff report and agree with all of the TEs except for number five, and I would like to, uh, at the request of the developer, make a revision to that TE. And I don't have a great exhibit on that, but I'll, if I could pass it-- The developer would like to amend that TE so that the walking trail goes from the common area where the playground is, uh, around the peninsula, if you will, the cul-de-sac, come back around, uh, to the lots that line up with 27th Street, and come back up a pedestrian easement in that area and tie back into the street, instead of continuing the pedestrian easement down to Southwest 29th Street. And the reason they would like to do that, since the original plat was turned in, the original preliminary plat, uh, this area at the, the southeast corner there has been sold off to some private builders. Uh, can you pull up the aerial, aerial photograph of that? That would help. And there've been several large homes that have been built in that area on, on acreage lots. Uh, those homeowners have actually constructed a, a new pond that was not there before, you can see. Uh, and so that area is no longer controlled by the developer. So the theory is that if that path was continued down that property line with that pedestrian easement, uh, you'd have the house, the backyard, a fence at the pedestrian easement, and then the walkway going adjacent to where these people have built their, their brand-new houses and spent a lot of money building that pond. There's a big concrete spillway up there that I don't know how much money they spent on, they spent a lot of money. So if that, if there's a sidewalk running along there with access to their pond and their property, they're gonna put up another fence. So now you're gonna have two fences with a walkway running like a chute down between it that nobody's gonna use. Uh, it's gonna be a safety hazard, uh, it just wouldn't be used, and so they would not like to do that, and they would like to make this change. Every place else where they have the, the, the walking trails, uh, up on the north side of the project, there's a Mustang Creek. We have common area access along there, it's a beautiful area. We have a walking trail as it come down to the south at the northeast corner of the property. Uh, we own out into the pond, so we have access and control of that shoreline of that pond. Uh, the, there's a nice walking trail that's constructed there. They've constructed a fishing dock there. That area's very nice, uh, but that's an area where they have control and access, uh, control of the access to it. In this particular property, they would not, and you would end up, like I said, with a, a narrow gate, basically, a chute 700 feet long with a walking trail through it that nobody would use.
Mr. Somebody's, Mr., we have somebody signed up for this, if you have any questions for Mr. Anderson before we hear. Mr. Parker? Could you come up, please?
Yes, sir. I'm David Parker. I live at 9509 Southwest 30th, uh, just the neighborhood to the, uh, south. Uh, I don't have any issues or exceptions with the development of the homes. Uh, my exception was with the proposed new entrance, um, and for the reasons that I'll, I'll give here. This would be the third entrance for the Fountain Grass neighborhood. Uh, there's numerous neighborhoods surrounding these that are much larger in size and quantity of homes. Uh, they'd only have two entrances. Um, the only one that is closed that I found was Westbury, uh, but it serves three streets, a mile on the east, a mile on the west, and Southwest 15th on the north. Um, what you also see on the aerial map, they're not represented on there, but was, there's two new driveways where those, um, new homes have been constructed that were referenced to just a second ago. Uh, so that would be, you know, one, two, three, four, five, uh, entrances and exits in a, in a pretty short span, uh, one being on the north, uh, that would be the fourth or, one being on the south, four being on the north. Also, the proposed entrance, uh, sets kind of below the crown of the hill, uh, could be a potential safety issue for drivers coming out, looking left or right. Um, in addition, the current grade, uh, the road sets about 10 foot below the current grade. I don't know the developer's plans to, to grade that entrance or exit on the 29th Street. So, uh, also, the, the entrance and the exit on, uh, to Morgan, the city obviously invested a lot of money to widen, uh, Morgan Road to a four-lane. Uh, 29th Street's just a two-lane. It dumps you into either a school zone, stop signs, uh, or a railroad, uh, whereas if you, uh, use the Morgan Road exit, that's four-lane, takes you to the I-40 corridor where they recently redid that intersection as well. So for those reasons, I just felt like I don't think they need another entrance and exit there. Uh, so I wanted to lay those, those arguments out.
Um, the, that entrance in this track, though, is entrance to the primary north-south access through the neighborhood. As I look at the design, I, I don't see how we can agree to delete that for a number of reasons. Subdivision regs, fire, I, I just don't, just to address your point, uh, that is the primary road for the east side of this whole development with respect to the north-south access. That causes us some problems from a planning standpoint.
Uh, so, so if the road needs to be there, one, one alternative I would like to propose, uh, obviously I live on one of the little lots where the entrance is-- I live on one of the little lots where the entrance is, exits out, or comes out to. If you go down to the east side of Lot Five, which is on the south side of Southwest Twenty-Ninth Street, I don't have a way to show you, but basically where, right there, that's a house, and right to the east of that, which is to your right, is an easement road. It's an oil easement. There's no light. There's no houses there. There's lights coming in and exiting would not be shining into anyone's backyard. That creates a T as you enter the neighborhood, but if you look at neighborhood designs across the city, you see TEs as you go into neighborhoods all the time, but would still give you access on the east side of the neighborhood.
Chris, I'm sure the developer would like to continue with the plat as it was approved, the preliminary plat. This is the last phase of this subdivision. It's kind of late to ask for a change on the line with this street now. You have the same circumstance coming out from their neighborhood on Westbury Glen Boulevard with the street shining lights into lots in this neighborhood. So, this isn't something unprecedented.
Commissioners, any other questions? Mr. Parker, thank you for your comments.
Sure. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Comments? Motion? Chris, did you, what about the rest?
I was okay with all the, he's with all the five.
With all the other technical evaluations?
Yes, sir.
If we all agree, we don't have a variance, we can approve it.
Make a motion to approve.
Deleting TE five.
Second.
Motion to second to approve item forty-two, deleting TE five. Cast your votes. That's approved. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you very much. Item forty-three is PV zero-eighty-eight, an application by TD Investments and Four Corners Construction to vacate a note on the plat of Asheville Phase Two relating to internal sprinkling on residential structures in Ward Four.
Commissioners, Dusty Bourne, on behalf of TD Investments and Four Corners Construction, sixty-one eighty, Boucher Drive, Edmond, Oklahoma. TD Investments is the development company for Asheville. Four Corners Homes is the active home-building company in there. Come before you today asking for that note to be vacated for the requirement of fire suppression in every home that's built in that. During a meeting, several meetings with Mr. Allen and Mr. Councilman Pete White, we've discussed this in great detail, and so, these are the steps that we started taking to get that done. So, with that, I would answer any questions you have and ask for your approval.
You know, I was, I guess, maybe the forerunner of sprinkler houses, but, you know, I think we were given the advice, if you will, that that was about the best thing since Bob's Ice Cream. But I think that is, that thought has melted somewhat, because I know not only Mr. Bourne, but other builders have had problems selling the house because of fear of the sprinkler system. Number one. Number two, you know, we were told that insurance rates would go down. That's not the case. And I think in some of your experience, you've had the insurance rates to go up.
That is true.
Because of maybe false activation of those sprinkler systems. And I know that our staff has recommended denial, but, you know, I just don't think that with all the things that I've heard and seen over the past couple of years since that's been in force, and I just think we need to alleviate that. And with that, if there's no further discussion, I would recommend approval of the application.
Well, I think there is some more discussion. Now, I'm
Wait a minute.
On this particular application? Yes, sir.
Just one, if we're, the policy discussion, I think, we ought to have when we've got everybody here, because we're going to have, obviously, more. I don't think you can get to five. Just, there's only five? One, two, three, four, five. Happy to have your comments, Nick. Just letting you know, Dusty.
Sure. Have a minute. This particular application may make sense for approval, may not, okay? I think there's a bigger issue here on this particular application. And the reason we had sprinklers in the first place was the lack of available water, okay? We didn't have public water there. And now, I don't know what's transpired since then, where the closest water is. Obviously, doesn't work well to fight a fire with a seven-hundred-and-fifty gallons on the back of a truck. But it begs a bigger question also, that Jim sort of brought up. We've had a number of representations about fire and fire suppression. Some of those have borne out, some have not. We've asked fire for cost data. We were given some preliminary cost data. Now, we have a number of additions that have been sprinkled. We've never received that cost report. We've never received anything on the misfires, as you call them. We were led to believe that statistically, it virtually doesn't happen. Before we approve, and I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bourne, this needs to come back to us when you have nine people or eight people voting. This one kind of makes sense to me a little bit, if there's water right up here, which I believe there, or was led to believe there is. But that being the case, I really think we need some current information from fire before we summarily enforce these or deny them. Obviously, we intended this to be when we passed it. Things may have changed.
It was my understanding, though, and if, maybe JJ can answer this, if we didn't have fire suppression, there was a requirement that we had a dry hydrant or a water tank in the subdivision that would supply so many gallons of water. And that would be if, if that, if the fire suppression was alleviated, then they would have to come back with either a dry hydrant or water.
Water tank.
Or you could have a subsequent event where water was really available.
Right. Well, but reading into what the application, well, what the fire department said, no, deny it. So, I trust those guys, because they put out fires and they know what all this stuff is. So, the assumption might be wrong, Jim, that they have analyzed this particular plat, at least this area, and said there's not enough water, there's not enough hydrants. We would prefer the fire suppression to be sprinklers. I don't know that that's the answer, so I agree with you. But things have changed over the past couple of years. If our information with all those committee meetings that we had, and we went through lots and lots of detail with those several years ago, if something has changed to make that not right, then I think we ought to get some more information and just
I don't disagree with that, and, but I, like, I don't think there's any fire hydrants in that subdivision at all.
Jim, I put it in
There's not in Ashville.
There's no water to have sprinklers.
Put it another way, there was a reason, whether our reasons were based on good or bad facts, there was a reason that we put fire suppression in here. If it's just, and I'm not suggesting it is, but if it's just the fact that now, all of a sudden, I've, as a developer, I've changed my mind, albeit Mr. Bourne wasn't the original guy that agreed to all this.
No, actually, I was.
Oh, you were, okay. I thought it had changed.
As a matter of fact, they voluntarily agreed to put fire suppression in. We didn't ask them to. They volunteered to do that.
Okay. Well, and they did it because it didn't meet our requirements, and they didn't want to do a tank or whatever. I don't know. All I'm saying is, if some, something has really changed, then this application ought to be approved. If it hasn't, that, Mr. Bourne, you've just changed your mind, and all the facts, relevant facts are still what they were, then I wouldn't support this. But right now, I don't know, I don't know what the case is. That's why I suggested it come back.
Okay.
And we get some more information.
Fire's here. I think also, you know, you just mentioned about cost, and, you know, I think some, somewhere down the line, we said somewhere between, our fire department said somewhere between a dollar and a dollar seventy-five a foot, and I think it's about three or four times that. Is that not correct?
Well, I don't know. That's correct. Our average price right now in all the homes that we've done is three thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars. That goes from a high of four thousand dollars to a low of thirty-five hundred. So, it's not just about us changing our minds that we brought this up and volunteered it because the city was kind of pushing towards that and was wanting people to try this out. We volunteered to do that. We're really listening to our customers here who request us not to put it in their homes, and we have to say we have to in order to. So, given the choice of taking thirty-six hundred dollars and giving them a storm shelter or putting fire suppression in, they would love to take that money and invest it in a storm shelter, and that's what we're trying to be able to do here.
But if there's, if there's no way to put the fire out, this is, I think, what Nick's saying, you know, if there's not enough water, if there's, you know, the other, the other fire suppression methods, if it ain't there, then who puts out the fire?
Well, he would have to put it there. What the market guy is saying, the guy buying the house is, I don't care. I'll take, I'll take my chances. I'll take my, I have a less probability of burning down than I do being blown away, so I'll take the storm.
Actually, I guess it goes the other way.
And I, but that's basically what the market's saying.
But this neighborhood has a minimum density of three-quarters of an acre per home site. So, these homes are, and we also have another requirement, that the homes have to be so far apart from one another.
Well, can I use one of Nick's terms that I've heard him use several times, and I'm not going to apply this to the whole commission, but there was a lot of drinking at the coup raid, if you know what I mean? And the numbers, and this has nothing to do with Mike, because this was before him, but the very first meeting I sat on, I sat in as a planning commissioner, was about fire suppression. I didn't support it then. I don't support it now. That's no secret. But the disparity between what the fire department thinks that this product cost and what the builders who are putting it in cost is so dramatic, it's who do you believe? Well, I don't have any problem, because I know we're seeing this every day. We've seen homes where this fails. And so, for me, to see Mr. Bourne up here, knowing that he's committed to doing this several years ago, and coming back and going, you know what? This thing working.
I mean, that's just question.
That's where I see the problem.
No, I understand, and that's why I asked Mike back there. We've asked repeatedly for revised and current data. We haven't received it.
Okay. Just one, just one point, and then we're going to continue this, because how big are your homes?
There's no homes in this neighborhood below two thousand square feet. Most of them, on average, would probably be around twenty-eight to three thousand square feet.
So, a twenty-eight hundred to three thousand SF, and an average cost of thirty-six and change for fire suppressant, seems that's about a buck and change a foot. So, the numbers aren't, I mean, I'm talking to the guy that's putting it in. So, the numbers are not wildly disparate from what we've heard in the past. So, I think we're kind of painting with a broad brush here on this cost issue, because Dusty's just confirmed, the number's about, in current day.
That's correct.
And I appreciate your candor on that particular topic.
That also goes into effect of whether you're having a thirty-five hundred square-foot home or a two thousand square foot. So, the two thousand square foot, the price
The cost is a little disproportionate.
Is disproportionate to that square footage. So, the average home brings that price down a little bit.
Right. You get some, you get some skewing of the numbers at the highest.
I looked at every home that we built in there that has the fire suppression, and that's the average. So, that's what I wanted to bring to you all today.
Fair comment. Okay. September twelve?
Move to continue.
I'll withdraw my motion and make a motion to continue the next meeting.
Right. Cast your votes. Continue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, I'm guessing you just assume wait till next time's when you've got a full audience, but we're happy to hear you if you'd like to speak. Thank you.
Okay. We are on item forty-four, which is the introduction of an ordinance for hearing on September the twelfth, twenty thirteen. This amends Chapter fifty-nine and relates to a district that was drawn around Oklahoma City Memorial and Federal Building regarding outdoor sales. In essence, it shrinks that boundary.
Move to set up for public hearing. Second.
Motion to second, set item forty-four for public hearing. Cast your votes and set.
And item forty-five is another ordinance set for hearing on the same date, same chapter of the code, and this relates to maximum height of components within electrical substations. And I believe this is at the request of OG&E, and I believe Mr. Box is going to talk about it.
Good afternoon, David Box, five-two-two, Call Core Drive. Mr. Claus is correct. This is at the request of OG&E. As part of their smart grid system, they require towers within the electrical substations to be able to communicate wirelessly with the grid. All that communication is intra-company, and there aren't third-party carriers on that. What they found is some locations, due to topography or other things, they need to be able to get to at least sixty-five feet. So, instead of coming before the Board of Adjustment with seventy-five or two hundred variance applications, what they'd like is to have what the staff has crafted here, which is a very exclusive amendment, which restricts it to electric substations only, and it can't exceed sixty-five feet. So, there's, there's no fear that some other company would be able to utilize this in a manner that wouldn't be consistent with OG&E's purpose.
David, just say, OG&E does not, they have only their equipment in their substation. They don't colo or set out for anybody else or anything like that.
That's correct. It is only OG&E equipment.
Okay.
And in many instances, there are lightning rods that would be taller than this. So, this, this is just to allow them to get intra-company communication on these towers.
Understood. Commissioners?
Second.
Motion to second to set for public hearing. Cast your votes. Set. Look at that.
I believe we move, I guess, item ten.
Oh, item ten, yes. You have any objections to item ten? Surface parking lot associated with this use?
The only question I had on it, why is I-1 required for a parking lot?
I think, JJ, that matches the existing zoning, the, for the use.
We just used I-1 as a base, because that was kind of the norm for that area. It's transitioning to industrial. The applicant's business is zoned I-1 next door.
I understand that, but theoretically, a parking lot could be a lower.
Yes.
If we were going to rezone it, we can rezone it lower. I don't have an objection to it, other than
So, we're going to act on this?
Well, we typically don't
Come on, fellas.
On the applicant's
I know, we denied the law of the law.
Move for approval.
Second.
Cast your votes.
Approved.
Oh, gee, Mike, I meant to vote against that.
Okay. Planning Commission Committees. Commission Members.
Department. There will be a study session in the UDC, I believe, on September the twelfth, and since most of the items were deferred to that date.
Yeah. Bring your sleeping bag.
I do have, do have a history of repeat referrals.
So, yeah. Okay.
And I believe you will be hearing on the meeting of the citizens advisory team on Plan O- Plan OKC shortly as well.
You mean one's upcoming?
Yes.
Okay, so I thought, hadn't happened yet.
Not yet.
Okay. Development Services, Municipal Councilors, Citizens. Any other business?